Good afternoon. I call the April 18, 2023 budget session study or budget study session meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, would you kindly advise the public on how they may participate this afternoon?
Thank you, Mayor. The public can view this meeting in person in council chambers or on fullerton.legistar.com. If the public would like to address city council, they can do so here in person. If you'd like to register to speak, you go next door to the city manager's office to register. We'll call you to the microphone when it's your turn to address city council. Or if you haven't registered, please be sure you're lined up on this north wall so we don't miss you when it's your opportunity to talk. And anybody else, please keep that aisle clear. Or the public can call in on Zoom, 1-669-900-9128, or log into zoom.us/join and use meeting ID 97842191797.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Would you be kindly call the role?
Mayor Jung.
President.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Charles.
Here.
Councilmember Dunlap. And Councilmember Zara.
Here.
We'll now hear public comments on budget study session items, those wishing to speak. In chambers, please line up to do so. Are there any registered to speak in chambers?
I have no one registered in person and no one on Zoom.
Very well. Bring this back and goes to, we can go right into our study session. I assume Director Chang, you are making the presentation this evening, or this afternoon, I should say.
I am kicking off the presentation. So, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Today's study session includes budget highlights by the city manager Eric Leavitt, an overview of accomplishments by Cindy Barrios, our budget analyst, a presentation of the proposed general fund budget, and the five-year forecast by me and Stephen Avalos, our budget and purchasing manager, and the capital improvement projects plan by David Grantham, principal civil engineer. Before I hand the presentation over to the city manager, I would like to thank all the departments for their collaborative effort in development of the fiscal year 2324 proposed budget, with a special thanks to Steve and Cindy. With that, I'll turn it over to, turn the presentation over to the city manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Chang. Mayor Jung and the council members, I just want to provide some highlights. In putting together the city manager's proposed budget, I want to highlight first that the city's fiscal condition has improved over the last couple of years, based in large part what the council has done in previous years in making the, being fiscally frugal. So, based on that, the city has a 17% contingency reserve level for the first time in 2021, '22. That will maintain under the current proposed budget for the next two years. In the out years, we might struggle a little bit more, but in the next two years, we would maintain the 17% contingency reserve level goal that the city council has established. In addition, we still have a credit rating of a double A that's been affirmed as recently as 2021. For those that don't know, that credit rating is a very high credit rating for a city. And based on our fiscal challenges we've had, I'm proud to say that the city has been able to maintain that through this time. In the proposed budget, we have $14.3 million in street improvements that we've put, that we've allocated and put forward as a proposed budget. In addition to that, the city council could add an additional $250,000 from the infrastructure funds to make it a little bit over 14.5 million. That would be in comparison to last year's budget of 11.8 million, which would be about, would be approximately a $2.5 million increase in funds for the streets this coming year. The proposed budget also includes, in addition to that, and we can go into this a little bit further, M2, putting aside a reserve of local funds to ensure that in future years, in the future years after the initial two years, that the city would have enough local funding that we would be able to maintain our M2 funding coming from OCTA, which is about 2.5 to 3 million. There are some concerns that we don't, wouldn't have those in about three years out. So, we're proposing to set aside about $5 million over the next two years. That could be used as matching funds for those OCTA funds in the future years. The proposed budget does not fully reflect the two-year plan that the advisory committee has on the Hunt library implementation. But our recommendation is if you want to move forward with that type of concept, you could put a placeholder of $195,000 in the budget, and that could be used when the Hunt library comes forward in the future, probably in June. With that, I'm going to turn it back to Director Chang.
If I, if I may, I have a couple of questions here before we move on, if, if possible. For the streets, we have, I'm not sure if this is working. For the streets, we have 14.3 million allocated. Do you have the total number of our street repair deficit?
Director Chang.
And also, sorry, since I'm one here, my second question, I have two questions here. Second question is, I know you, you've said the condition has improved and stable, but that seems to be also primarily due to the ARPA funds that we received.
I think it's a combination of both the reductions that the city has undergone over the last few years in conjunction with the ARPA funds. And a portion of the ARPA funds that was designated for fiscal stability is going to be applied this fiscal year with the remainder in 2324, which should help bolster the city's ability to kind of continue operating as it moves into '25, '26, and '27, '26, '27.
And I think the overall, there was talk about bringing all the streets up. I think it was over 200 million. That was before some of the current inflation. So, we, I can go back and find those, we can have those recalculated.
I actually think, I think the 200 million might have been total infrastructure. I thought the roads and streets is more like 120 million, but that was three or four years ago, is, is, I think.
It's a little outdated, so, okay. And with that, I will hand it over to Cindy.
Thank you, Eric. So, as you know, it's been an outstanding year for the city of Fullerton. And today, I will go over just a few of the city's accomplishments. One of the main initiatives in public safety has been establishing its own unified fire command to provide and support ongoing services to the community. Another city initiative involves investing in the city's infrastructure, and key projects are currently underway, such as the Naresco Energy Efficiency Project, which is about 80% completed, and various IT infrastructure projects funded through the American Rescue Plan Act. In addition, the Public Works Department has plans to repair approximately four and a half of residential streets and two miles of arterial streets this calendar year. The city has also brought back many community events and programs since the early onset of the COVID pandemic. The Parks and Recreation Department hosts a variety of community events, including Discover Fullerton on Foot, Craft Noon's, and Feed Fullerton, which have distributed over 3,000 meals to residents. The library continues to offer storytime for kids and reading programs for youth and adults. In the next slide, you'll see that in the area of community development, the city has approved significant projects, which include Fox Block and Park West. The city continues to seek strategies for citywide organizational efficiencies and employee leadership development. As a regional effort, the Hope Center, located in the city of Fullerton, opened its doors in October of 2022 to address public health issues with an emphasis on services to homeless individuals in the North Orange County region. Lastly, the city continues to put efforts into community engagements through many activities such as Coffee with a Cop, Cookies and Rookies, to name a few. I will now hand the presentation back to Alice, who will go over the proposed general fund budget.
So, thank you, Cindy. So, this slide presents the general fund fiscal year '22, '23 adopted and projected budgets in the first two columns, and the fiscal year '23, '24 city manager proposed budget for city council direction this evening. The green rows, which is really the first row and the last row, present the beginning and ending fund balances. The gray rows present their revenues and transfers in, and the trans, and the expenditures and transfers out, and as well as the proposed MOE reserve discussed by the city manager towards the bottom, towards the bottom of the slide. The net operating surplus is presented in the orange row towards the bottom as well. So, the projected fiscal year '22, '23 budget was presented at the mid-year financial update in February. As a quick recap, general fund is projected to end the current fiscal year at a positive $8 million net surplus, net position or surplus. This projected surplus is a result of revenues coming in about 4.7 million above adopted levels and expenditures coming in about $2.4 million under adopted levels. As staffing stabilizes, it is anticipated that vacancy savings will diminish and expenditures will normalize. Additionally, the city will be applying $2.65 million of ARPA revenue replacement for fiscal, to support fiscal sustainability. The difference between total revenues and transfers in and expenditures and transfers out is the $8 million surplus. As mentioned by the city manager, staff are proposing a $3 million set aside in the current year and a $2 million set aside in fiscal year '23, '24 of general funds to establish a reserve to support future year measure M2 matching requirements. The city receives approximately $3 million of M2 funds annually from Orange County Transportation Authority. To continue to receive these funds, of which about 2.5 million is used for city streets, the city is required to spend $5 million annually from eligible unrestricted resources, which is typically the general fund, to continue to receive annual M2 funding. Moving on to the last column, the city manager proposed fiscal year '23, '24 budget includes projected general fund revenues of $119.7 million and a $7.2 million, and $7.2 million dollar transfer, dollars of transfers, in which includes remaining $6.95 million of ARPA revenue replacement for fiscal sustainability. The proposed general fund expenditure budget is $119 million and $4.2 million of transfers out. The transfers out include the annual transfer of $2.7 million to the infrastructure fund. And the general fund expenditure budget also includes the $1.4 million of city manager recommended budget enhancements. The city manager recommended changes to the budget will be reviewed later on slides 11 and 12. City manager proposed budget also includes a $1.5 million transfer out for residential streets, capital improvements, and fiscal year '23, '24. The proposed budget has the general fund projected to end the, the next fiscal year '23, '24 with a positive change in net position or surplus of $3 million. And with that, I will hand the presentation over to Steve, and he will provide an overview of the changes in general fund revenues and expenditures for the next fiscal year.
Thank you, Alice. On the next few slides, I will outline the city's general fund revenue highlights for fiscal year '23, '24. For illustrative purposes, I will just leave this slide up and speak to the talking points on the other two slides. Property tax. Property tax is the general fund's largest revenue. It's 46% of all general fund revenue and is projected to increase to $54.6 million in fiscal year '23, '24. This is primarily due to increases to the city's property tax and lieu revenues, which increases in line with citywide total assessed valuation increases, which is anticipated to be 5.4% in '23, '24, as well as continued secured property tax growth. Sales tax is the general fund's second largest revenue. Sales tax revenues are projected to increase by 0.8 million and total 30.2 million in fiscal year '23, '24. This continues the city's strong sales tax growth from last year and is a credit to its diverse economic base, as well as continued economic growth. Next on the chart, you'll notice increases to license and permits and charges for services. This is largely due to increases in development-related permits and fees. These revenues are projected to increase by 54%, or 1.6 million in fiscal year '23, '24. This is driven by volume, the number of permits issued, as well as increased project valuations as projects and development activity continue in the city. This is also attributed to increased cost recovery services provided, which were approved a few years ago. Lastly, as Alice mentioned earlier, the fiscal year '23, '24 budget reflects the remaining use of ARPA revenue replacement funds of 6.95 million to stabilize government finances. Next slide. For expenditures, general fund expenditures will total 119.7 million in fiscal year '23, '24 and reflects an increase of 5.4 million from fiscal year '22, '23 adopted levels. Of that, one and a half million is for salaries and benefits, which includes the approved MOA salary increases for our safety groups approved last year, as well as annual salary-related merit step increases, as well as CalPERS pension adjustments. On the maintenance and operations side, the two and a half million increase is primarily due to cost of, cost of doing business, operating increases, built-in contractual increases for our approved agreements, as well as rising utility costs. In addition, the fiscal year '23, '24 proposed budget includes 1.4 million of city manager recommended budget enhancements, which we'll speak to on the next slide. These are centered around improving operating service levels to the community, adding key, key programs and community events, as well as creating organizational efficiencies to deliver such services. As Alice mentioned earlier, the fiscal year '23, '24 budget will transfer out 2.7 million to the infrastructure fund, which is about a 1.2 million increase from last year. And this is due to increased property and sales tax revenues. Lastly, the fiscal year '23, '24 budget reflects a budget enhancement of $1.5 million for residential street projects toward its street infrastructure improvements. I will now hand the presentation back to Alice.
Thank you, Steve. As mentioned earlier, the city manager proposed general fund budget includes recommended service enhancements outlined on this slide as well as the next. The total of these recommended items is about 1.4 million, as represented in the dark green row at the top of each slide. One-time expenditures are costs that will impact fiscal year '23, '24, but will not be carried forward into subsequent year budgets. Mandates are also indicated. The recommended expenditures are grouped by public safety, community preservation, community events and services, and on the next slide, organizational efficiency. The individual items under each, under these categories are subtitled on the category description lines. The recommended enhancements were identified and included by the city manager based on city council and community feedback throughout the year. If there's no questions on this slide and the next, I'll go ahead and move on to the forecast on.
Director Chang, I do, I do have a question on the final item on this particular slide, the Maple Center scholarships, $10,000. Is this a one-time thing?
That would be an annual.
This is an annual?
If the city council chooses to move forward with that particularly.
How was this proposed?
I believe it came up during one of the city council members, and one of the city council maybe meetings, when I think when the YMCA contract was approved. I think one of the council members had suggested maybe diverting some funds to provide the scholarship to.
So, why wasn't this integrated into the YMCA contract? Why are we, as a city, having to provide these scholarships rather than it being negotiated through the Y?
As I, as I recall the conversation at the time, the request was for us to look at 20,000, so all that's in the proposed budget is 10,000, but was to look at 20,000 because we were getting savings from the YMCA contract, and so could we use some of those savings for the scholarship?
So, why wouldn't we go through the Y, who is the direct operator of that facility, rather than go through the budget process in the city?
We, we could do that, if the council, we could do that.
Shouldn't that be done that way? That's best practices to me. All right, thank you. Please go on.
If, if I may, just.
Go ahead.
I have some, some questions. On the city sales tax growth, you mentioned in the, in the sales, in the report here, there's also current inflationary environment. So, how do you project the, and work with the current climate, economic climate that we have, which is a very strange one? Because inflation, as the federal government's working to stabilize inflation, have you considered that in, into your projections as far as future outlook? Also, same thing with the housing, with property taxes, because the housing market is, is at a all-time high right now. And so, those may change, that may change as we move forward. So, that's my one question. And as to the Maple Center, I was the one who brought this up because it was not, because the, the YMCA do provide services and low-income services, but they're not enough to cover lower-income residents or residents who may not necessarily be in that low-income bracket that qualifies for the scholarships that the Maple Center, that the YMCA provide. And as a result of, of that, that was the suggestion, and we are saving quite a bit of money from the, the leasing out of that. So, I think that is the genesis of how this ended up here, based on the recommendations of how count, how the staff and the manager recommended bringing this forward. So, just to clarify that, the, the leasing of the Maple Center to the YMCA does not cover enough students and, and residents for some of the programming. So, I think it is essential for us to provide at least some sort of expansion with the savings that we are gaining. This is a small pennies compared to other, other items in here.
If I may, the notion that it's small pennies rings very hollow to me. It's $10,000, it becomes a yearly thing. It's very simple. We are at the table in these negotiations. So, we could actually determine that the Y make and afford these scholarships that are necessary. If indeed, we are saving the kind of money that you're saying, and I, I recognize where it's at, because, you know, I've read the staff report just same as you. Give a little bit of that back and make sure that these scholarships are held through the Y, not through the city. I think it's best practices to do that. I'm not opposed to what you're saying. I think it's fair, sounds perfectly reasonable. I just think the process is wrong to go through the budget, not the Y.
The process, I mean, that, that is a technicality, and I have no issues with how this is provided, as long as we are providing some of the savings back to the community in this form.
You and I are in agreement on that.
Yes.
So, to address your question regarding inflation and specifically to sales tax, the city works with both a sales tax as well as a property tax consultant. And the higher inflationary environment has created an uptick in the city's sales tax revenue because it's based on the cost of the goods that are sold or the services provided. And that's what's driven some of that sales tax growth, sales tax revenue growth to the city. The determination of what the projected sales, sales tax numbers will be in the next fiscal year and, and outlier years in the forecast, we work with the sales tax consultant. We review a number of economic reports so that we're able to kind of. so that we're able to kind of, and also we look at historical data to see what, how the city has fared in prior years, and then we kind of determine what that sales tax projection looks, should look like. In terms of property tax, similarly, we also work with the sales, with the property tax consultant. They help us with some level of forecasting. We are looking at, you know, as housing sales progress, you have a step-up in basis, the assessed valuation changes, so we do work closely with them. But the property tax increases that we're seeing from this year and last year's housing, the strong housing market will probably see the bulk of the benefit in 2324 and into 2425. So I think that addresses your questions regarding sales tax and property tax, if there's nothing else, and then...
Mr. Mayor?
That should be it, thank you.
So I had a question, I don't want to spend too much time on it because I realize it's only, I think it's like the fifth or sixth highest, but, so with the TOT tax, we've projected a 6% year-over-year growth. And I'm curious what we take into, like, does that take into account that, like, for example, the Anaheim-Fullerton Hotel has been scraped and they're looking to do industrial there? And I assume we'll see an uplift in, in property tax revenue as a result of that sale, and then whatever, you know, impending or potential development comes? Just curious how, and I guess how granular, how detailed, you know?
We typically for the par, for the TOT, which is the hotel bed tax, we do kind of look at the number of hotels we've had, we look at historical, historical TOT revenues that we've generated. Given the fact that a lot of staycations are happening more regularly, tourism and travel is up, occupancy rates at hotels have seen an uptick, so we take that into consideration. Some of the, the lost TOT revenue to Hotel Fullerton being closed, some of that has been made up with some of the short-term rental TOT that we're generating from that program as well. It's not, it's, it has recovered, but with the loss of that one hotel, we're not expecting continued growth in that area.
So then, in a sense, that would be reflected in the actual figures that would then be trended and projected? Okay, thank you.
Can you go to slide 11? So, let me go back. So with that, let's, if there's no other questions on the City Manager-proposed adjustments to the budget, we'll move on to the next slide and go over the five-year forecast.
I had one other question. I suppose this is for our chief. Chief, I had circled on here a concern that I had about a mounted unit. It's a one-time cost, so it's not a terrible concern, but it's $145,000. Can you let me know, one, I suppose we have a mounted, mounted unit. What would be the, the reason for that in terms of need? And, you know, are these funds better allocated somewhere else where it's more needy in your budget?
Sure, I guess there's two prongs to that answer. The first one is the mounted enforcement piece would be limited to four officers. We do not have one currently. A lot of the agencies around us, including the county sheriff, do have it. What it does offer to us is, in times when we need additional resources, we are then avail to the additional resources from outside of our city that come in without costing. And, you know, the flip side is, we have to do the same for them as well. Also, we don't purchase the horses, it's the riders' responsibility, so most of the costs are borne by the riders themselves. What this figure includes is a vehicle and a trailer for them to transport the horses to their various events. That is a city asset, the rest of the, the stuff is really on them. But there's also, we have a very large equestrian community in our city, which I know you all know, and we also have a desire to tap into them as a resource for volunteerism. So if we were to have an event maybe in our hills or with the new trails opening, that we could have kind of like a volunteer group come out on their horseback and assist us with looking for lost hikers or participating in community engagement events. So we look at it as like a multi-pronged thing. And they're also an excellent tool for community engagement. They can go on patrol, they, you would see them downtown on our busiest nights. So it's, it's just a force multiplier for us, it also is a recruitment and retention tool for the department as well.
All right, thank you.
Can we move on to slide 13, please? So the proposed five-year general fund forecast projects fiscal years 2324 through 27 and 28. The forecast format is like the general fund proposed budget presented earlier on slide six, with the addition of contingency reserve levels at the bottom. Revenues and transfers in are compared against expenditures and transfers out to project the change in fund balance, as well as the operating surplus or deficit. In the current fiscal year 2223, it's projected that general fund ending balance will maintain the 17% contingency reserve achieved in the prior fiscal year, with an additional $7 million to be carried forward to support fiscal sustainability in future fiscal years. The proposed budget projects general fund ending fiscal year 2324 with a surplus of $3 million and after a $2 million reservation for future maintenance of effort and ending fund balance of $27.1 million. General fund is again anticipated to maintain a 17% contingency reserve in fiscal year 2324, as well as in 2425, with any available fund balance above the contingency carried forward to future fiscal years. It's projected that general fund will exceed the minimum 10% contingency reserve level in fiscal years 2526, as well as in 2627. Towards the bottom, you see that row titled MOE Reserve, and that speaks to the set aside of $5.5 million in, in reserves to address our M2 kind of match. So it's expected the city will begin to draw on those reserves, beginning in fiscal year 2526 through 2728, to ensure it's able to meet the necessary maintenance of effort required to continue to receive the OCTA Measure M2 funding to support maintenance and improvements to city streets. So with that, before the CIP budget is presented, staffs available for any questions or to take city count, direction from City Council on the operating budget.
May I have a question?
Council member, go ahead.
Thank you. So I would just like to have you go into this a little bit further in terms of what we're seeing here on the slide, so that it's clear to everybody. Could you explain more about why there's a recession forecast two years out and, and what those numbers reflect?
We, we actually project in 20, we, we typically in our five-year forecast, as well as in our internal longer-term forecast, working forecast, we tend to project recessions about every five years. For the 2526 forecast, we did a very, very mild recession because there's a lot of uncertainty in the economy. There's a lot of talk about a recession, but there's been talk about a recession for probably the last five years. And I think if, I think this year and next year will give us some time to evaluate if the recession is more severe than we had forecasted, we would update this forecast and bring it back to City Council.
And then just one more question, and these numbers, my understanding is, is that they don't reflect what we saw last week in terms of the OCPA and that in, starting in 2526 or in 26, they're going to be bringing in money to the city as well. So the, that future projection is not included in these numbers?
That is correct, it does not include the projected revenue that we're expecting to get from OCPA.
I have a question, if I may, on, on the contingency reserve. It is here projected to be over...
That's correct.
6.7 million?
6.7 million, we're projected to be over our 17%, 17% contingency reserve level on 2324.
And could you just elaborate a little bit more on, on what we're going to be using this 6.7 million for?
So anything above the contingency reserve, including the, actually, anything, including the contingency reserve and above it, we're looking forward to carrying forward to beginning that fund balance in the subsequent fiscal years, because starting in 2425, you'll see that because of the additional increase to the infrastructure fund, our net operating surplus, surplus switched is to a deficit starting in 2425, and essentially the, the excess above the contingency and the contingency reserve starts to be drawn down in the, in outlier years, primarily starting in 2526.
So we will not be using this in this budget? This is going to be money set aside?
That's correct.
And in what form would it be set aside?
It will, if City Council would like to increase the contingency reserve level, we can assign that as fund balance in this year, as well as next year's financial report, or it will stay and remain in general fund as available fund balance to be utilized in subsequent fiscal years.
Since the council member was kind enough as to discuss the contingency reserve, explain to the public the importance of, not the contingency reserve, but how the contingency reserve is directly impacted our credit rating and the importance of that.
I think during COVID, we did do bond refinancing, and a lot of the difficult decisions that City Council had taken to address the impacts of COVID really spoke to the strong governance of Fullerton City Council in addressing and maintaining fiscal sustainability. And a lot of those reductions, as well as the ARPA, have really helped the city in maintaining and increasing our reserve levels. Because I think in 2122 is the first year we actually hit the target of 17%. In prior years, we were always hovering around at 10%. And in 2021, we were able to get above that 10% for the first time at about 13.4% contingency reserve levels.
So the credit rating that the City Manager described was a double A, correct?
That's correct.
Is that the highest credit rating?
The highest credit rating is a triple A.
Right, so we have a ways to go. It's improved, all right, very well, thank you.
Any other questions? Nope, okay, and then I guess with that, we will hand the presentation over to David Grantham.
Good afternoon. Okay, I'm going to do a high-level review of our proposed CIP budget for next year. Overall, the, the focus here will be on maintaining or repairing what the facilities, our infrastructure that we have now, rather than full-scale renovations. For example, we're not widening roads, we're not building new buildings, we're not completely demolishing parks and rebuilding parks. We're taking what we have, repairing it, and kind of keeping the same infrastructure that we have right now. That being said, these are the following departments that I am setting up CIP projects for. It's the, the typical people, the, the Public Works Divisions, the Library and Parks and Rec. But I do want to point out that PD and Fire, Police Department and Fire, did submit requests for projects, but I'm putting those under the public facilities, and I'll go over that as we go through this. So I'll start with our favorite subject, our streets. There is the funding breakdown, the 5.5 million is the final allocation of the 13.1 that was approved by, or approved by council for allocation a couple of years ago. It also includes the, about $350,000 of a CDBG grant. That is the full amount, the full amount we requested was awarded to us for streetwork, so we're always happy about that. And it also includes the 1.5 million that is recommended by the City Manager at this time, but not technically approved by council. The 1 million for infrastructure fund, I'll go into more detail about that as we go through. Next slide, please, so... You will be seeing a lot of me later today at council, so I'll go into a lot more detail at that time. But here is a map showing recommended, what I'm recommending for the street improvements for next year. It is a combination of utility, following utility projects and non-utility projects. I'm also recommending starting the pavement, a pavement treatment project, an annual pavement treatment project. That can include slurry seals, cape seals, chip seals, some items like that, not just slurry seal. But again, we'll go into more detail later on with that. Next slide, please. I mentioned the 1.5 million that is recommended for enhancement. If that is approved, the roads in red is what I would recommend to use that money for. Essentially, what I'm trying to do is expand the limits of the projects that I recommended with the previous funding. I anticipate that will not, these roads will not cost 1.5 million, and any additional funds left over from that, I would use to expand the pavement treatment project for the year. Next slide, please. Now, every year, everyone looks at the, the streets that are going to be recommended for rehabilitation, and most people are not happy, there's very few that are happy. But I want to kind of point out that we don't look at street work as a, as a yearly project. We have to look at it as, as an annual ongoing project. And we try to be as equitable as we can, looking at the previous years and also forecasting the type of, the locations that we're going to be doing work in the following years. So I just wanted to show this for the last five years where we've worked. I'm trying to show that we're doing our best to be as equitable as we can throughout the city, and I'm still trying to do that as part of this year's recommendations.
Director, if you'd be kind enough, the misinformation that is often in the public is this concept that street repairs should be equitable, as you mentioned, and that districts should share in some sort of repair egalitarianism of some sort. But I want to note, and I'm certain you would find some agreement here, that street repair is impartial at best, quite frankly, because it benefits all residents and those who travel on our roads. But how do you determine which streets are going to get done? It's by, there's an index involved, right?
Yes, so we are required as part of receiving the M2 funds to inspect our roads and file a report every two years with OCTA. That report provides a rating from 0 to 100 on all our streets, 0 being bad, 100 being fantastic. And what's happening now is we, we've, we're kind of lopsided. We have a good percentage that are in good shape and a very good percentage that are in very bad shape. So we use that report in conjunction with utility projects, other private developments, and locations as to come up with our recommendations for the street locations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to ask, while we're on that subject, what is our current PCI, Pavement Condition Index?
Knew I should have brought that slide. I know our arterials are at 74.5, because we're almost fair. I believe our residential's are in the mid, mid to probably around 63, 64, 65, and I think our overall is about 67. We're on an upward trend, especially with our arterial streets, but most people live on our residential street.
Thank you, I hadn't looked into that recently, so I appreciate the update.
Okay, next slide. So we'll get off of streets and move on to utilities. Water, sewer, and storm drain. Water is our biggest contributor, for lack of a better term, to our CIP projects. 17 million, the vast majority of that is going to be allocated to a water main replacement. Sewer enterprise and storm drain infrastructure, I really wish we had more money available. Fortunately, our sewer system is in good shape, but the, our revenue from the sewer enterprise fund has been very flat over the, I don't know, last 10 years or so. And with operations and maintenance costs increasing, the amount of money available to CIP is decreasing, and that's what I forecast for the foreseeable future. I really wish we would have the ability to tap into additional funds for sewer and definitely for storm drain, the same issue there. The revenue is flat and the CIP is, available money is getting less, and we're actually dipping into fund balance to help fund projects for next fiscal year. Next slide. Just a map of where the water division is planning on doing water main projects. Actually, that is the wrong slide, that's last year's, sorry, we'll update that. Next slide, please.
Quick question.
That's my bad.
On the, when, when you're repairing the sewer or water, does that mean that you're also repairing the street above it?
We, we, we try to do that. In the past few years, that has been absolutely our approach. I will go into more details at the council meeting as to why we might be switching that approach or tweaking it rather than switching it, but that is our preferred approach, unless there are other mitigating reasons. Okay, traffic systems. Obviously, you would like to drive home safely, so we, we need to update and improve our traffic systems, streetlights, striping, all those type of items. We're getting some M2 regional and federal grants related to traffic signal synchronization projects. Otherwise, we're using M2 and gas tax the majority of our funding for next year. Next slide, please.
Can I ask a question on that one, actually?
Yes.
Just because this is very important, we're on my side of town. On the traffic signals, are those being replaced throughout the city? Or is it only some that are getting replaced? And what do new traffic signals give us in terms of capabilities?
Okay, so we're not really necessarily... Okay, so we're not really necessarily replacing traffic signals. Sometimes we'll upgrade some of the parts of the equipment, like the controllers or the battery backup. Rarely do we do new signals. We're a built-out city, but if the traffic volumes and the turning movements warrant it, then we'll look at it and put them in. So, for example, because of the Goodman Development State College in Kimberly, that warrants a new signal. It helps with the flow of traffic and the safety passing through the intersections, what the signals do for us.
I've noticed that we've replaced some of ours to have the brighter yellow around the signal to make it more visible.
Yes.
Against the sky. Are we doing that in more places throughout the city as well?
I think that's up to the city traffic engineer, which locations you feel that's necessary. Sometimes if you put them everywhere, then they become so common, no one sees them anymore. I think they need to be placed in locations with, for specific reasons. Something that's a little bit different obviously stands out.
Thank you. I did have a question about the slide before. You had made mention of the fact that sewer enterprise fund is flat, revenue was flat, yet costs continually increase year over year. Same with the storm drain infrastructure, revenue flat, costs again increasing year over year. I did note that Placentia increased their sewer by, per resident, by about $65. Fountain Valley just increases their sewer. Do you have an idea of when we last did that increase?
It has not been increased since we implemented...
And when was that?
It's probably at least 15 years ago.
15 years ago.
15, 20 years.
Very well. Thank you.
You got some good questions catching me out. Okay, airports. I'll give a lot of credit to our airport manager. He, there's a lot of money from the FAA available, and he does a very good job of taking full advantage of those grants. The last couple of years, we've done, plus with COVID, they've, we've been able to 100, fund 100% of the projects with FAA grants. Typically, the FAA will pay 90%, Caltrans Aviation will pay 5%, so the city's only paying 5% of the projects, project costs, and that's going to continue next year. Kind of back to the status quo with that. But Brandon does a very good job of setting up his projects to make sure he takes full advantage of his grants, and that's what we're doing. Next slide. All right, facilities and library. This is where I had mentioned before, the fire department and police department requested projects. This is kind of where I'm putting this, this, those projects in this location. So I'm creating projects such as the citywide ADA improvements, and I apologize, Councilman Zar, a couple of meetings at council, you asked for an update on the transition plan. I did not forget about it, but I haven't done it yet. And I also have to apologize because we are done with all the work, but it's been sitting on my desk to finalize, and unfortunately, it's been sitting on my desk a little too long. But we are still using that information as part of our projects. We've done it this year, and I can, I will continue to do that even though it's not quite finalized yet. I'm also creating a project, the citywide facility projects. And that's where I'm putting requests from other departments into a project where I can keep track of all these projects and discuss with all the related stakeholders as to how to prioritize the projects and move them forward. There's another slide coming up where I, I'll go into a little more detail on that, especially with the infrastructure fund. But with facilities, facility capital is used for most of our routine maintenance. The general fund is from the HR department. They have some savings that we're going to carry over and use that to do some renovations in their office. But I am using portions of the infrastructure fund, and then of course, the Library Foundation always provides some donations. Next slide. And finally, Parks and Rec. Park Dwelling Fund, the majority of the funding comes from building permits. So over the last couple of years, it's been, you make projections, but a lot of time, the permits have been delayed to get pulled. So we've been very conservative, well, Parks Department has been very conservative in providing the budget for next year. However, we're very confident that some of the developments will actually pull their permits next year. So the amount of funding will actually significantly go up and give us a little more flexibility on projects, and in that case, we'll come back to Parks and Rec Commission and if council is applicable to allocate that money. But we prefer to be conservative at this point because who knows what's going to happen? And if the developments decide to stop, then the money doesn't come in. Again, their projects is, you know, the work we're doing is focused on repairing rather than brand-new facilities.
You didn't factor in, I don't see here it being factored in, the opening of Union Pacific Park. Are we not planning on doing that this year or next year?
I'd have to check with Alice on the exact timing on that, but we've already started with the ad hoc committee, so the design has started, but unfortunately, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know the schedule.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, next.
Actually, if I, if I can ask a question on the Parks and Rec, the infrastructure projects, I don't know if this is here or in maybe the maintenance section, but we are, public bathrooms, especially in the parks, have, are, really need a lot of work and maintenance. Where does that fit in in this budget here?
It depends on it. It can, if it's in a park, you know, we'll talk with the Parks Department if that's a project they would like to fund. It depends on the level of work that has to be done there. It could fall on facilities as a routine maintenance, or it could fall into Parks Department to do that work. We do have a list, Valencia Park that we have up there. We're planning on rehabbing, renovating the restrooms as part of that project there. So it is on our radar. We do look at those to make sure we try and program in some of that work. And that's another reason why we have the ADA project, too. I can use that money to do restroom improvements as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Counselor.
So I've got a question. I don't know if this is for you or the city attorney, but, you know, obviously, we hear about the park fund and money that, monies that are available. So what's the, kind of the distinguishing factor between what determines what can be, you know, what's a general fund expense, or what's an expense that can be used for maintenance and things like that? Or, hey, this is something that can be paid from the park dwelling fund?
Sure. So in general, general funds are what we call unrestricted can be used however the council would like to allocate them. The majority of the funds the city getting are what we call restricted. Park dwelling specifically can only be used for improvements or acquisition of parkland. She taught me something. I remembered it. It cannot be used for routine maintenance.
Okay.
So a repair of an existing place structure cannot park dwelling. Replacement with a brand-new one, yes, it can.
Okay. Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Go ahead. Okay. Keep going. All right. So I talked about the infrastructure fund. As this is a relatively new fund created by council a couple of years ago, I thought it would be helpful to show a breakdown of how I'm proposing to use the infrastructure fund. So my goal in general is to take half of the money, put it on streets, and take the remaining half and put it towards our facilities. Our facilities are obviously infrastructure, and a lot of them still need a lot of TLC and repair work, and I thought this is a great way to address those needs, especially with infrastructure fund being a subset of general fund. It doesn't have the restrictions. I can use it on any, any sort of city infrastructure. So very quickly, we got the streets, about half the, half the money. Citywide ADA improvements, we've got the final year of the transportation center ADA improvements that we need to complete, so that's, that'll go away the following years. The new citywide facility improvements project, where that's where items that PD or Fire or our city parking lots, those type of things would be funded from. And then we've got the two one-time project costs at the library. The elevator refurbishments, which actually, we're responsible for 50% of the cost for those. There's a grant available to cover the other 50%, and also the replacement of the material sort, that's a one-time. So those wouldn't be continuing, but my intent in future years would be to use the streets, citywide ADA, and citywide facility improvements as annual projects and put infrastructure funds into those projects. Okay, I'll keep going. Next slide, please. I create this slide every year, just more of a visual to see where our funds are coming from and how they're being used. Couple of highlights, the water fund is making up 42% of our $40 million budget. I do show the 1.5 million proposed enhancement under the general fund. The remaining 120 is the HR office renovation. And then the vast majority of the, oh, the community management block grant, we applied for two grants. We were awarded the full amounts we requested for for both projects, so that's very helpful. And then the federal grants include the FAA for the federal. The pie chart, I think, is very telling. You know, the vast majority of our CIP budget is restricted fund. With that, I'll take any questions or comments.
Sir, can you, I know that we allocated 12 million to streets and roads last year.
Yes.
Do you recall what the allocation was two years prior to, to streets and roads?
It's probably close to 6 or 7 million.
6 or 7 million. Where did that come from?
M2, SB1, CDBG, that's about it.
No general fund?
There may have been some rollover from the one-time revenue, the 5 million when the city sold the Meridian and the Rule 20A funds.
What do you think that allocation was?
That was 5 million.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Counselor member, please.
Thank you. So I'm very appreciative of the FAA grants. I think that's wonderful. But we've also heard talk about going after other federal grants, such as the bipartisan infrastructure law money, hopefully for streets. There's other funding, sustainability grants, climate change grants from both California and the federal government. It looks like those aren't in here yet, so I'm just wondering if we do get allocated those, if those do come through, you know, where will those go?
Yeah, it obviously depends on the restrictions of the grants and what we get awarded. And we, every year, we ask earmarks from the, for the state budget and the federal budget. We haven't been very successful in the past. Sometimes the representatives are not interested in pushing those, sometimes they are, they just, we don't get them over the line. We've done that for streets. I think this year, we're doing it for the, for the police department. We do anticipate an upcoming active transportation grant from OCTA. It's kind of a project on Nutwood Avenue in conjunction with Cal State Fullerton's project. We haven't been awarded that. It'll be in a couple of years, so that's not shown here. We do our best to go after grants that are available. As you can see, CDBG, we go for that every year. The problem we have is most of the grants are looking for new improvements, you know, kind of what's sexy. Reconstructing a road is not very exciting, and so finding those grants to do that is very, very challenging.
So that, again, is defined roundabouts as sexy? Is that part of why that was? I mean...
Well, yeah. I mean, it was, it was considered innovative, and, I mean, hey, everyone talks about it.
Exotic, maybe, but I don't know.
This is a question for our city manager. Since the councilwoman was kind enough to bring up grants, 1.5 million dollars in terms of allocation for grant money, do we have a dedicated grant writer in the city? Are we doing everything by need? That's just yet another thing staff has to do.
We have a grant, we do have a contract with a grant. We're relooking at it right now. And then we also have...
We're looking at it right now, though.
Yeah, we are, we are looking at it.
Not, it hasn't been in the past, right?
Yeah, we do have one, but it's tied to our lobby or to our group set.
So it's not a dedicated grant company, right?
Right, exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may just elaborate on that, because I, I remember when we...
Please.
Prior to 2020, I think we were talking about trying to bring in a dedicated grant writer for the city, but then at the time, I think we chose to expand the services of Townsend that they were doing our lobbying for us, and then we expanded their services to include also grant writing. And I think they've been able to bring in some significant amounts of money in, or at least provide direction where the money is. So, and I, I think Councilman, Mayor Tim Whitaker would probably remember that because we were both on the council at the time.
All right. Very well. Thank you.
So if there are, if there are no other areas the city council would like to discuss further, staff will bring forward this proposed budget for formal adoption in June.
I have one other thing that I wanted to articulate. I know that we've discussed this during our briefing, but I did want to reiterate it one more time. I'd like to see a budget that includes the labor increases that we project.
The proposed budget does include some local...
Some, not all. So I'd like them, I'd like it to include all of it. Let's see what it looks like.
Okay.
All right. Very well.
You know, actually, yeah, the only other thing I'll add is, I know these were kind of included as potential options, but I do think we should include, you know, the $195,000 placeholder for the city to operate some kind of an interim or temporary partnership at the Hunt Library. I also think, you know, we should include that $250,000 placeholder for the roads and streets to the extent we can. Let's see here. I think that, yeah, that's, so that's, that's about it. Those are the two concerns I had.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Counselor member, please.
Thank you. And I would just like to voice my support for the improvements to restrooms in our public parks, particularly in Chapman Park, where the East Fullerton Little League has its season, and unfortunately, we weren't able to do much for this season, but with the hundreds of kids and parents in that park regularly, the restroom certainly need improvement there. And also, I'd like to express my support, we mentioned for the grant and earmark that we're going after for the police station. If you haven't seen it, there's a great write-up in the Orange County Register about that. I think it's a wonderful thing that we are getting some public and representative support for it, and, and it's my hope that it goes through and will be included in our budget.
Counselor member, I think the city manager may have a positive update for you for that Chapman Park you just mentioned. I'll allow him to do that in just a second. I would like to see and support real-time crime center. I think it's important that we find ways to utilize technology to better solve crimes so we can prevent crimes. The homeless encampment cleanups perform weekly. I am in favor of seeing that, as well as our additional code enforcement officer for cannabis and other enforcement. All right.
If I may, I'd like to just see if we can include a line item for just a one-time line item for scholarships this year, just to give us some time to discuss how we're going to do it for, on an ongoing basis.
Counselor member, I'm absolutely supportive of one-time. I just don't like it's talking about...
All right. Sounds good. And then I am supportive of also the real-time crime center. That was something I wanted to, I'm glad you, you brought it up. And homeless encampment cleanups, I think that is an important thing. I'm appreciative of having park maintenance be something that's included and expanding some of our vacancies or bringing back some positions that were, were eliminated in the past, so I'm happy about that. And, and I do agree with the placeholder on the Hunt Library and some of the things that have been mentioned here. So I really appreciate staff putting all this together. I know it's, it's a daunting task, but it seems that our city manager, our staff have listened to this council. I know sometimes we have disagreements, but you found a way to incorporate a lot of the community needs and, and put together a really good budget proposal. So thank you for that.
Mr. City Manager, you want to address the Chapman Park?
Sure, sure. Mr. Mayor and Council, I can address that and then just make sure I'm clear on direction from the council in general, too. On Chapman, and I sent it out, I sent an email out, but we've been working with, with internally, and so the DPC major has worked with Parks and Rec, and so we are doing some short-term improvements to the bathroom because there have been some bathroom vandalism issues, as well as we have a longer term, probably six to eight months out, that we're, we have some money set aside in the parks that are going to be used for those bathrooms, to improve those bathrooms at Chapman Park. And then second, so I heard a list of items, so what I was thinking, if there is not objection from council, we would bring back the budget as proposed and then add those items to that, and we would highlight that in the budget when it comes back.
Sure.
Unless there's an objection to any of those items.
The budget's not a sentient being, so it requires us, you know, as a council and as a staff, to continue to do the work in real-time, adjust, and see what challenges or opportunities are on hand, so, you know, bring it back with what we suggested, let's take a look at it. But again, I would like to see the full labor increase and how that... how that bears onto the budget. All right.
Uh, can I just ask one, one more thing when you bring it back? Would you be able to put together, uh, just so the public understands where our staffing levels are, uh, maybe for each department, just a general, uh, broad, um, scope of, of our staffing levels? That would be, I think, helpful in, in looking at each department. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you, folks. Give, uh, council, you've got about, uh, 25 minutes for the dinner.
Good evening, everyone. I'll call the April 18th regular session meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll. I'm just gonna pretend I read it wrong.
Yes. I'm sorry, put the wrong day down there again to make sure you're reading it properly.
Oh, excuse me. Give the advisement to the public on how to participate.
Okay. The public can attend this meeting here in person, or they can watch it at fullerton.legistar.com. If they want to make public comment, they can do it here in person, or join on Zoom at 1669-900-9128, or meeting ID 97842191797. And all that information is on our website if you need more information on how to do that.
Terrific. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Jung.
Present.
Mayor Portem Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Charles.
Here.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Here.
And Councilmember Zara is nearby and accounted for.
And I will ask and invite Dr. Hassan Khan of Batul Hamid Mosque to give us the invocation this evening. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, respected mayor and council members, and respected brothers and sisters. Assalamu alaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuhu. This is the Islamic greeting. May the peace and blessings and mercy of God be upon all of you. It's very kind of you to invite me to give the invocation tonight. Just by introduction, I am a resident of Fullerton. My wife and three kids and I live in Fullerton. We've been here for the last 11 years. I'm a physician with Kaiser Permanente in Orange County, and I'm also a member of the National Board of the Ahmadiyya Muslim Community. Our mosque in Southern California is at the Batul Hamid Mosque in Chino. In Islam, the holy book, as you know, is the Quran. And I will recite in Arabic the opening verses of the Holy Quran, which is considered a prayer in and of itself. A'uzubillahi minashaytaanirrajim, bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahirabbilalameen, arrahmanirrahim, maliki yomiddin. Iya qana'budu wa iya qanashtain. Ehdenas siraatal mustaqim, siraatal lazina an'amta alaihim. Gairil maghdhubi alaihim balad ghaliin. Amin. In the name of Allah, most gracious, ever merciful, all praise belongs to Allah, Lord of all the worlds, the gracious, the merciful, master of the day of judgment. Thee alone do we worship, and thee alone do we implore for help. Guide us on the right path, the path of those on whom Thou hast bestowed thy blessings, of those who have not incurred thy displeasure, of those who have not gone astray. Amin. I would just like to add that we're in a very sacred time. It's a time that happens only once every 33 years. And that is a time when then, when the sacred days of the three major Abrahamic faiths, Christianity, Judaism, and Islam all celebrate at the same time. We just saw the observation of Easter and the observation of Passover, and we are in the closing days of the sacred month of Ramadan in Islam. Ramadan, as you know, is a month of fasting, where Muslims do not eat or drink from just before sunrise to sunset for about 28 to 29 days. So we're in the 26th day. The month will end in a few days, and then we will celebrate Eid, which is our festival, which will be on Friday. So I have many friends who are Muslims in Fullerton. And I've always found, and my wife and children have always found Fullerton to be a very cosmopolitan, a welcoming community where we're able to practice our faith. And I think this time, which happens every 33 years, is a reminder of what keeps us all together, what we have in common, rather than what our differences are. I would also just like to introduce the Ahmadiyya Muslim Community, of which I am a member. It is comprised of over 200 million men and women throughout the world. And the worldwide leader of the Ahmadiyya Muslim Community is His Holiness Mirza Masrur Ahmed, who resides in the United Kingdom. And we believe in the coming of the second Messiah, Mirza Gulam Ahmed of Gadiyan, whose advent was foretold by all of the major religions. And our Khalifa, His Holiness, preaches a message of love for all, hatred for none. So with that, I invite all of you to visit our mosque in Chino. And I again thank you, the council, and all of the staff for inviting me this evening. God bless you.
Thank you. And if I can ask Councilman Zara to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had no closed session this afternoon, so I will skip the closed session report. That's all right with our city attorney. Next to our export aid communications, I'll look to my left, and I'll look to my right. I did speak with the firefighters. And we will ask Councilmember Dunlap to join me, and let's do the fireworks drawing.
And while the mayor and councilmember Dunlap are walking up, I will note that we are doing the lottery for the Safe and Same Fireworks Sales Lottery Drawing. We have new, as of last year, two separate drawings, one for five youth sports partner league groups, and we'll also do one for 10 of the community groups. We only had five youth sports partner groups, so no drawing there. All five of you get to go, and we will have the mayor and councilmember Dunlap draw 10 of the 22 of the other groups. That mic's available, too, if you want to use the stand-up one or the podium. I'll take that. If you're here, it's okay to cheer, too. They, just tear it, it's okay. Number one.
Troy Warriors.
United Pentecostal Church of Fullerton.
That was three.
Knights of Columbus, this is for Council 16, 452. There is Chance.
That's number five.
Knights of Columbus again, this one for 4018. Ah, here we go. Sunny Hills High School Football Booster Club. There we go.
Three more.
There you go. Fullerton Indians Football Booster Club.
Lots of new equipment in here.
Kiwanis Club of Fullerton.
All right, keep your fingers crossed, this is the last one.
Fullerton Cares Autism Coalition.
Fullerton Cares. For those of you that were drawn in the lottery, the permit application will be on the website tomorrow, and we'll also send out an email notification to everybody and let you know how the results went. So thanks to her, anybody who was here for the drawing. Oh, we should draw five alternates also. Sorry. Thank you.
All right, there you go.
Someone out there's done this before.
It's nice to be able to get up twice in a meeting. All right, we'll let the Trojan pick this time, don't mess it up. It's gonna be hard, I know.
You have to stop those, we can put his hand in.
Alternate number one.
Temple Beth Tikva.
Four more.
Number two, Boys and Girls Club of Fullerton. Three is the Sunset Lane Education Foundation.
Thank you, two more, please.
Break Every Chain Foundation.
And this time, this is really the last one.
Fullerton College Women's Soccer. All right.
Fullerton College Soccer, thank you. We'll still have the permit up tomorrow. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, councilmember.
We have certificates to hand out for the presentation this evening.
So we are gonna ask and invite Mr. Alan Stubblefield, who's the program head coach for Troy High School's cybersecurity team. And we're gonna do a really cool presentation for all the students and the coaches. So, Mr. Stubblefield?
All right. Since he's ill, if you want to announce yourselves, tell us a little bit about the team.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is David Kim, and I'm one of the cyber coaches, as well as a teacher at Troy High School. And here, I also have Mr. Christian Nguyen, who's also one of the cyber coaches, as well as a teacher. To give a little background about our cyber program, Troy Cyber was first started back in 2010 by Mr. Stubblefield, who unfortunately isn't here tonight due to illness. But early on, he saw that there was a need for cybersecurity as a nation, and so he developed and grew their cyber program at Troy, which has become the largest program in the nation, with over 2,000 students having participated in it throughout its 13-year history. And over the years, we've had tremendous success with the program, as we spent more than, sorry, sent more than 20 teams to nationals, two of which are here tonight, with Baboons Together Strong in pink and Run Time Terror in the gray. And this year, Run Time Terror also came in first place in the nation for the second time in the last three years, and brought us our fourth national title in the last five years. And so we would like to thank the city council and Mayor Jung for this certificate and recognition. And I would like to especially acknowledge the students for all their hard work and their success. Thank you.
Microphone to Coach Wynn. And Coach, if you want to start announcing some of your team, starting with the captain.
So our team captain for is Brian Yi. Brian Yi, can you step up, please?
So Brian, I didn't print this, but I'm gonna apologize on behalf of the city to Brian.
He does have a big brain, though.
And this is Eddie Carmona with our state of the state.
Congratulations to all the recipients today.
Thank you. Our next competitor is Johnny Nie. And our next female competitor is Anna Wu. And our final competitor is Victoria Yang. And then, I'm sorry, last but not least, we have Erin Shan. I would like to recognize two. So these are our national champion from the national team, and then I'd also like to recognize Brian, can you raise your hand? And Chan Chung. They are all-American, they made Nationals four times, so that's how they get more chosen. So Brian Yi and Chan Chung. Next.
There's still more people.
Yeah, so our second team, we have Tai Yu Chan. Okay, next is Max Chen. Then we have Nicholas Rowe. And then Jaden Wijada. So these are our two teams that are national finalists for this year.
And then we can.
Washington, unfortunately, he can't make it.
Wait, wait. Sorry, we're gonna take a photo for prosperity's sake. This might be the smartest group I've been around in a while.
Everybody look up here, please. Thank you.
All right, congratulations.
Then we have a proclamation on behalf of our council for National Donate Life Month. I'm gonna ask Ms. Tina Cruz and Ms. Regina Mo to join me, and we have a little, I think they have a little presentation, yes?
This is a slide.
Newbies, newbies. Good evening, good evening. First, I want to thank Mayor Fred Young and Fullerton City Council members and your support for April Donate Life Month. Fullerton holds a special place in my heart because my two daughters spent many years in this city cheering and playing football for the Fullerton Bears. My name is Regina, and I am a donor mom. My connection to organ donation is through my son Ivan Sandoval. Ivan was a spunky little boy with a big personality, he loved playing outside and getting all dirty. My daughter spent many evenings at cheer practice, and Ivan was always there. He would run wild on the field and of course be playing in the dirt. Every coach, parent, and athlete knew who he was because he was all over the place. I never had to worry because everyone knew who he was and kept an eye on him. If he wasn't running around on the field, then he was trying to get into the routine with the cheerleaders. Sometimes he would even copy some of their dance moves. We would all joke around and call him our team mascot. In June of 2021, my baby boy was in a car accident, which left him on a ventilator. We found out pretty quickly that Ivan wouldn't make it through his injuries. At the young age of five, Ivan became an organ and tissue donor. His life couldn't be saved, but his organs and tissues saved three lives, one of them being an eight-year-old girl at the time. Ivan's story is not over, he is still living on through other people. I am able to stand here today to honor my son because of the many people who have supported my family in this journey, some of them being Mayor Fred Young, his wife, and his family. I want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart. I also want to encourage everyone to say yes at the DMV or at the R online at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org. One person can save up to eight lives with organ donation and enhance the lives of 75 people with tissue donations. You can also join Team Ivan Sandoval, April 29th, at One Legacy Donate Life Run Walk in Azusa. You can join by going to www.donorfamilyrunwalk@onelegacy.org. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today regarding the importance of organ eye and tissue donation.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, City of Fullerton. I stand before you, a mother of an organ donor, but that's not where my story started. It started in healthcare. I knew One Legacy, they were the organ people, right? The people who made transplants happen. I was wrong. It's a lot more than that. Later, a few years later, after working in the emergency room, a local Southern California emergency room, my little cousin went into, first-year student here at, actually, Cal State Fullerton, started having eye and vision problems. So I took her to the eye doctor, thinking, you know, I can help with that, I can help you get glasses. After seeing a few eye doctors, we were told that she had end-stage renal disease, she had Berger's disease that was causing her kidneys to fail. And I thought, I can fix that, right? Because I'm the fixer. I'll give her one of my kidneys, easy. It's not that easy. 15 years later, she's still waiting for a transplant. Today, there's about 120,000 people waiting for a donor. Now, I said I was related to or aware of One Legacy as a trifecta. January of 2021, my daughter Esperanza, 24-year-old, was working from home, which she did often, so I enjoyed those afternoons. We got to work together because I do work from home full-time. And that day, she decided she was going to renew her license online. And as she's going through, me being the nosy mom and overbearing mom, I heard her kind of grunt and go, "Oh, I'll handle that later." And I stopped, and I said, "What are you going to handle later? You know, do you have questions? I've been to DMV, I can answer them, right?" Obviously, I wasn't an ambassador at the time. She said, "Oh, something about a pink dot." And I said, "A pink dot?" I said, "You know how near and dear this is to our heart. A pink dot, that's like you testing to be an organ donor, a living organ donor for your aunt." And she said, "Oh, it is? It's the same thing?" And right there, I realized a lot of people don't relate the two, or don't know that they can be a living donor, or don't realize that being a living donor is also the pink dot saying yes at DMV. So being a mom, and her being a young adult, I stepped away, went back to my work, and let her make her personal decision. Five weeks later, she called me around midnight and was asking my opinion about going out and so forth, and so I offered to pick her up. I said, "You know, I think you've been out having a little too much fun." She said, "It's okay, I'm not driving, Mom, I'm responsible. I will take an Uber home, my car's at home." I peeked out the window, her car was at home. That was at midnight. At 5:21 a.m., my doorbell rang, and I thought, "This girl forgot her keys because she didn't take her car." So I got up to answer the front door, and two CHP officers stood before me, and they asked for the family of Esperanza Cruz. At that moment is when I found out that there was an accident on the 55 freeway, and the car that she was riding as a passenger in slammed into the wall of the underpass of the 5 freeway. Ma'am, your daughter didn't make it. I went through the motions, notifying family, making arrangements. A few hours later, I had a phone call from a known number. I didn't answer. I listened to the voicemail and heard it was One Legacy, and immediately, I perked up, the family said, "Whoa, what are you doing? Calm down, you don't need to return that phone call." I said, "Yes, I do. There's a time here, I need to return that call." I returned the call, and it was One Legacy, doing probably the hardest job in the world, talking to me about my daughter chose to be an organ donor, and they wanted to let me know how the process would go and advise me that her organs would be donated. Still, it never really clicked, until a few weeks later, I received a letter stating that my daughter's corneas had been transplanted to two different people, two different adults successfully. Today, I stand before you, asking, will you make that same commitment? The commitment that I realized the day I got that letter, my daughter did say yes to the pink dot that day. And like Regina was saying, we have our Donate Life Walk on the 29th, and our website, onelegacy.org, or livingdonationcalifornia.org, if you'd like more information on being a living donor. Thank you.
Well, I really can't say it any better than the two mothers have, so I won't. And I'm just going to note that it is resolved that I, Fred Young, Mayor of Fullerton, on behalf of the entire Fullerton City Council, do hereby proclaim, April 2023, as Donate Life Month in the City of Fullerton, urge all citizens to check yes, like I did, online when you apply for or renew your driver's license ID at the DMV. So ladies, please, right here.
Thank you.
Presentation this evening from a group also that's very near and dear to me, my father being a cancer patient, City of Hope, Orange County. So if I could get Christina, Lisa, and Eresha, is that right? Am I saying that right?
Eresha.
Eresha, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Young, distinguished council members, community members, staff. I'm Lisa O'Neill-Hill. I am a very proud resident of Fullerton. I love the city, so thank you for everything that you do for us each and every day. I'm here this evening to talk to you about City of Hope, Orange County, and all of the advanced cancer care that is available to your constituents and to our neighbors. And before I start, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Eresha.
My name's Eresha, I am a resident of OC. I am the Senior Manager of Marketing Operations in Orange County. I'm going to give a little history on City of Hope. City of Hope was founded in 1913 by a group of volunteers in Duarte, just outside of Los Angeles. In 1946, we turned our focus solely on to cancer. Today, City of Hope is one of the largest cancer health systems in the world, and we're undergoing significant transformation. One of those transformations is our expansion into the OC market. On the screen is one of our grateful patients, Donna. Donna turned her cancer diagnosis into a new outlook on life. She's now one of our biggest advocates, and launched her own Instagram at @cancerfashionista, fighting cancer one outfit at a time. Donna is one of the 3.2 million reasons why we are now in OC. City of Hope is a cancer-focused health system with the national reach. We recently joined forces with Cancer Treatment Centers of America, who are now known as City of Hope. We also operate TGEN, a biomedical institute located in Phoenix, and we also founded Access Hope, offering technology, oncology expertise through employers.
Next slide, please. Oh, sorry, go back, sorry. So one of the things that people don't necessarily know about City of Hope is our history of pioneering research. We have made discoveries that impact 100 million lives each year around the world. Four of the most widely used cancer drugs were designed at City of Hope, and as was human insulin. So our impact is very wide, and it's something that we're very proud of, and now all of this research capability is indeed available in Orange County. Next slide, please. We recently signed a contract with CalOptima Health, and this is good news because it means that people with Medi-Cal can now access our advanced cancer care. And we have a cancer center in Irvine, and then four clinical locations in Orange County. Next slide, please. So here's a little bit about us, right? We are one of 53 National Cancer Institute-designated cancer centers in the country. In Southern California, we have more than 37 clinical locations. We have more than 600 physicians and 1,000 researchers and scientists who solely focus on cancer. And this is very important, because when you have cancer, you want to make sure that the care that you're receiving is the best care possible. The sobering statistic is that one in three of us in our lifetime will get cancer, but all of us are affected by it in some way, shape, or form. We all have friends, neighbors, or family members who've had this disease, and City of Hope is dedicated to eradicating it and bringing tomorrow's pioneering research to the people who need it today. Next slide, please. So why did we come to Orange County? We had been in Duarte for more than 100 years, we had clinical locations across Southern California, but we came to Orange County, a county of, as you know, 3.2 million people, because there was a profound need. What we learned was that a lot of people, 20% of people with cancer, were leaving Orange County for care, and that meant that they were often driving two hours each way to Duarte, or going other places that were far away. So we decided we needed to bring our advanced cancer care to this community. The other statistic that's really important to note is that Orange County is aging faster than the national average, and the number-one risks factor for cancer is aging. So as we all age, our likelihood of cancer unfortunately increases, which is why it's so important that we're here in Orange County to provide care to people with cancer and help prevent it in the first place. Next slide, please. We recently opened Orange County's most advanced cancer center, and this is in Irvine on Alton. It is home to researchers and scientists who came to Orange County from around the world to practice right here. And when we designed this cancer center, we decided that we wanted to build it for and with the community. So we brought in more than 500 people to get their feedback, because we wanted to make sure that our cancer center met the diverse needs of Orange County. So it is designed in accordance with Feng Shui, and when you have the opportunity to walk into this cancer center, you'll see it's unlike anything else you've ever experienced in your life, because we have designed it to be more like home than hospital. And it's here that we have outpatient surgeries, medical consultations, prevention, and supportive care services that make sure that when you have cancer, you're being cared for mind, body, and spirit. So we're open right now in Irvine, available for anybody who needs us. Next slide, please. The other exciting thing that is happening is we are now building- The other exciting thing that is happening is we are now, um, building Orange County's only cancer specialty hospital. This will be seamlessly connected to the cancer center and will open in 2025. And what we're doing right now is we are, um, undergoing a mock design process. So we have built, um, a simulation of the cancer hospital in cardboard, and we are bringing people through to get their feedback about the design. So we're very excited that this cancer hospital is, um, opening in 2025, and it will complete the continuum of care for people with cancer. Next slide, please. Again, this is a little bit about our regional cancer network. We have, as I mentioned, the cancer center in Irvine, the plant cancer hospital, four locations, um, in Orange County, and locations in Long Beach, Los Angeles, and beyond. And our patients have access to more than 800 clinical trials each year. And this is really important because clinical trials provide, um, therapies long before they become the standard of care. Next slide, please. So before I leave you this evening, I want to, um, share with you three important things to remember. When it comes to cancer, your first shot is your best shot. And what do I mean by that? I mean that the most important time to get a second opinion is before you start treatment. And it's really important that if you have lung cancer, you seek care from a physician who specializes in lung cancer. If you have prostate cancer, you want to go to a prostate cancer specialist because they're the most up-to-date on the latest breakthrough treatments. It's also important to know your health risks. As I said, one in three of us will, um, develop cancer in our lifetime. So it's really important to understand whether there's cancer in your family history and if you have other specific risks. And finally, the best way to prevent cancer is to, um, sorry, the best way to fight cancer is to prevent it in the first place. And that, it means that it's very important for all of us to continually see our physician, get our recommended screenings, and, um, you know, just have a healthy lifestyle. The other thing that I, I want to make sure that everybody here, um, understands is that City of Hope is here for anybody who needs us. When, when you become a patient at City of Hope, if unfortunately you do have to go through that cancer journey, those of us at City of Hope will take your hand and never let go. So we'll be there with you throughout your cancer journey. And the last part of the presentation tonight is just a few quick words for some of our, from some of our world-renowned physicians. Next slide, please. We'll, we'll just skip that. Thank you. Um, well, thank you for the time this evening, and, um, if any of you would like to come out and do a tour of the cancer center, we would love to have you come see it. Um, it would be our honor to host you. And again, if there's anything that we can do to help you, your family, your neighbors, your constituents, City of Hope, Orange County is here to help. Thank you.
Lisa, valued Fullertonian, and Urisha, uh, did I get that right this time? I'm sorry, the first time around. Uh, please hello to, say hello to Dr. Edward Kim for me, and
I will.
Thank you very much for your kind presentation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is now time for public comments. If, uh, members of the public would like, uh, to consider removing items from the consent calendar, please advise.
I guess we'll start with Craig Sheets.
All, all right.
Lucinda, my sharp dresser over here.
Good evening.
Just got back from Two Rivers, the Great Lakes, Michigan, all that. You'll see that on the depths, one of my documents. Geiger counter. You guys got my documents? Did they get them, Lucinda?
We, we received, we received
Good, good. Geiger counter will, will detect any radiation. Could be in a classroom, could be at Salvation Army, could be in a church, you never know. First thing I'm starting with is the kill line. That is on the ocean. Those are those ocean rigs. They could cut the line, raw crude oil, and then if there's a nuclear device in a tool shed, which is a container that rides on trains, uh, they come, they come over ships overseas, and they go to trains, then to semi-truck. They could be put anywhere. They're on, they're on Walmart parking lots. They can go anywhere. Onshore tool shed, that's the ones on the coastlines. Chemical, uh, you got bleach, you got gasoline, you got oil right next to the shoreline where the ships bringing the oil. Wouldn't be good. We would not be receiving any rain, folks. That means we all die. No water, we die, all of us, doesn't matter who you are. The depths, that's the ships meeting in the ocean where it's real deep, there's no oil rigs out there, so that would, that would contaminate the oil in the, in the, in the depths of the water. Asset switches, this is forest, rivers, freshwater, freight trains. I studied them. I rode freight trains for seven years. I studied the lines. I went up and down every river for seven years. Believe me, they're there. So study that asset switch where the train pulls up along our freshwater rivers. Forests as well, it'll light up the trees. Oxygen levels will be nothing. Embalming fluid, this is to the kids on schoolyards. I hope, and I know I don't have to take responsibility for it because I'm speaking it tonight, I know it's there. I bought dope from these kids. I was an addict, and she knows it. I've discussed it before. I'm 25 years clean, no drugs. I hate it. I don't want it around me. Embalming fluid, those are the children selling the drugs to the proper children on schoolyards. That would be a big city issue across the nation, not just Fullerton. I'm talking Brea. Brea's where I grew up. It was there on the campus. I could get anything when I was in high school. And then, uh, Salvation Army, same thing. Read it. It does not work. It's a 99% failure. The reason being is those predators, the cat and lizard, are getting shifted out to sell the dope to make more kids dead on death records. Next meeting, oh, wait a minute, ventilation device.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sheets.
See you later.
Madam City Clerk.
Mayor, we skipped over the items pulled from consent calendar. Do you have any announcements to make before
Yes.
the public wants to comment?
Please excuse me. Uh, Councilmember Dunlap, you'd like to pull number nine, is that correct?
I'd like to pull and continue number nine. That was, that was, yeah.
Any other council members with, uh, items they'd like to pull?
Yes, I'd like to pull number 10, please.
So, Councilmember Dunlap and Councilmember Charles have back-to-back items, number nine and number 10. I just wanted to make a quick comment about number six, I'm not pulling it. I wanted to thank, uh, General Manager Adel Hashgalil, my fellow board members at Metropolitan Water District for this pilot project. I think it's, uh, it's great that they joined me in, in bringing this to Fullerton. All right. Next public comment, please.
And just for the public also, please work your way forward. Um, to let you know, if you have comments on pulled items nine or 10, you can comment on those individually, but now is your time to talk on any other consent calendar items that you would like to, or anything else in general to purview. So please.
Okay. I would just like to, I'm just here to vent my frustration on the lack of consistency in keeping Fullerton clean. I was coming down from Brea, down Brea Boulevard, set, uh, one morning at 7 o'clock, I saw five, five city trucks on the, cleaning up Brea Boulevard between, uh, Bassett Cherry and Panorama, five. However, I have never seen a city truck cleaning up a median on Orange Thorpe, which they're just horrible. They're cracked, they're weedy, they're broken, they're dying. Yeah, it's just trash. Coming from Placentia down Yorba Linda Boulevard, you know, City of Fullerton, it's beautiful, clean, beautiful. You hit Orange Thorpe, and it's Skid Row. You got homeless people that have taken up residence on the bus benches. I mean, there, there's a guy that's on the bus bench at Euclid and Orange Thorpe that has been there for weeks. I mean, he must have an address by now. He, he doesn't move. So who, who, who is gonna catch the bus there? You know, the, the, I don't know who deemed Southwest Fullerton to become the slum of the city. And there's, I don't know what I can do and where I can go, but it, I've lived in Fullerton for 60 years. We've lived in our home for 51. I have never seen it this bad. Not to mention the 91 freeway in Euclid, you know, the Magnolia. I mean, it's just, it's just, it's horrible. You know, I mean, I understand that this is their lifestyle. It's not mine. I pay my taxes. I, I'm a law-abiding citizen. I have a pride and ownership of my home. And yet, I have to walk outside, and I have three homeless guys sitting on the corner. And they'll sit there all day. And then when they leave, they leave their trash, they leave their shopping carts, they leave their junk. I, I mean, at what point do I have where I can enjoy my city? City of Fullerton used to be a beautiful city. In fact, that's why we lived here for so long. It used to be a quiet, beautiful little town. And now it's at least my part of town. I don't see anybody going, I don't see any of this like in Sunny Hills. There's like, like this fence, I guess, that they can't pass. You know, you don't see it in Rolling Hills. You don't see it in Golden Hills. You see it in Southwest Fullerton. And suddenly, we're just, you know, what happened? We don't have, you know, we pay our taxes, we, we should have police presence, we should have clean streets, we should have clean medians, we should have a welcoming environment. No, you get off the freeway, and what you got? Shopping carts that are falling down. Uh, there was a guy actually cooking under, underpass. Now, I don't know, you know, I'm assuming food, it could have been meth, I don't know what he was cooking, but I'm sure he didn't have electricity, so he had an open flame. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll get back to our registered speakers. Karen Lareda is our next speaker, followed by Yolanda Harrison, and then Todd. But they probably knew that.
Karen Lareda, Fullerton resident. I'm going to read it tonight because I want to try to make sure that I get everything in, but stay under my three minutes. So, "Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and the residents of Fullerton. I just had the opportunity to review the city's 23-24 proposed budget. I must say, it did not paint as rosy a picture as I expected after reading the state of the city address. First, I looked at revenue. Almost 80% are restricted funds. Only 4% are general funds, and almost half of that comes from property taxes alone. Fortunately, property taxes have done very well the last few years. Other revenue sources are sales taxes, TOT. TOT is your transient occupancy tax that comes from hotels. And then we had the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act. That's federal funds, and it's a one-time, we're not getting that every year. Looking next at our city's needs, I found decaying infrastructure. We need repair and maintenance of streets, water, sewer lines, parks, medians. We need to replace aging and missing equipment. There are too many vacant staff positions. We need competitive salaries to recruit and retain great staff. Understandably, much of this has been on hold, but it now needs to be addressed. Like a family, every city needs a job, something to pay the bills. Fullerton does not have theme parks, beaches that generate tourism revenue. We don't have multiple car dealerships or a large mall for sales taxes. To be able to create the city we all want costs money that we don't currently have. So Fullerton needs a new job, or at least a substantial side hustle, maybe two. What I did not find in the budget proposal was an economic development plan. I understand that there may be some discussion of that later this year. We do have a great educational industry. Perhaps there are some creative solutions for us to look at there. I urge this council to pursue cost-cutting efficiencies through partnerships and cooperatives, and get serious about finding resources to keep Fullerton the city we all want to live and work in tomorrow. I also encourage you to hold public meetings on the budget. Make copies available and promote it everywhere you can. Feedback is good. Thank you."
Thank you.
Next speaker is Yolanda Harrison, and then Todd Harrison, Bernard, and Maureen. You are following that, and then I have six more speakers that are registered, and I'll just note, we have four hands raised in Zoom, so if anybody else in Zoom would like to speak, now's the time to get your hand up.
Oh, I, I just want to say thank you for being here and making sure that we're kind of scheduled. Actually, I wanted to bring attention to City Council, Two Birds with One Stone. The streets are disgusting. There's garbage everywhere. I use a mobility scooter when I'm out and about, and I see it. You guys probably don't because you're in your cars, you need to zip by. You don't see the trash. You don't see the homeless encampments, you don't see the debris left behind, you don't see the people passed out. I do. And it is pretty disgusting. You're the city right beside the greatest city on the entire planet, for, at least for kids, you know? You're right beside the House of Mouse, and you're disgusting. About a year ago, I showed something to Mr. Zara, and it was a way to kill Two Birds with One Stone. Get the homeless to do the cleanup. Have them, there's a, there's a, I'm stuttering today. There's a community program in Northern California, and that's exactly what they've done. They've given homeless trash bags to clean up. They bring the trash bags in, City Hall pays them for the trash that they've cleaned up. And that's just one program. Curtis comes here every single meeting, and he begs for help for the homeless. This is one way to not only help the homeless, but also help Fullerton. I will dig out that information, and I will send it again, but to you too, Ms. Charles, to the trio, well, hear no evil, see no evil, speak no evil.
Next speaker is Todd Harrison, and following Mr. Harrison will be Bernard, Maureen Milton, and Kitty Hermio.
My name is Todd Harrison, and I'm one of the endangered residents of the Rancho La Paz Mobile Home Park. Hello again, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, and city staff of all departments. Please note that I chose this topic even before I knew the cybersecurity team would be here tonight. I'm going to use my three minutes of soapbox time for the benefit of the residents of Fullerton rather than just rant at the council. Last meeting's call-in attack on Councilmember Zara with the side swipe at Councilmember Charles was just one aspect of the evil enabled by the internet we've all come to depend on. This is particularly true for my fellow seniors and can happen to them even if they only use email or visit Facebook. My best, baseline message to all is simple, and even applies to phone calls and your regular USPS mail. If something is unusual, it's probably a scam. No, Microsoft will not call you about a virus on your PC, nor is that pop of an infection needing you to call a number is not true. Oh, and Bill Gates does not have money for you.
He doesn't?
No, your granddaughter is not in jail and needs you to send money by gift cards. No, your social security number is not about to be arrested. No, the bank or credit card company did not accidentally give you too much money and needs it back. Any activity that requires you to buy gift cards, or use Zelle, or provide banking info that did not start with you choosing to do something of your own idea or motivation is a scam, all of it. You'll be pressured into doing things quickly, and that is a mark of something bad happening. Stop, breathe, and involve someone you trust as a reality check. The specific list of bad things would be much too long for this speech, or even for an all-day class on what not to do. Instead, I believe the flag that should make you stop, think, and seek other help is feeling anything urgent. Even in our very rushed lives these days, any push for urgency is a warning. If you are not in handcuffs, or and your house is not observably on fire, take time to step back and be suspicious. Thank you.
Next comment.
Next speaker is Bernard, followed by Maureen Milton and Kitty Hermio. And then it looks like there are seven more speakers after that. If you have not registered to speak, but you'd still like to address City Council, make sure you're lined up on this north wall opposite me, and we'll get you in the rotation after the registered speakers.
Hello, my name is Bernard, and I am a Fullerton resident. Koma Jung, it's bonkers, the way you parse information. My issue was not the sum of money that was My issue was not the sum of money that was spent on the event. My issue was explicitly how much money was spent, and how you diverted taxpayer money to fund your campaign fluff video nonsense. In addition to your arrogance, your actions do not align with the nonsense that you spew you haven't even taken accountability for and acknowledged your rotten behavior, but you have the audacity to point fingers. I repeat, your shameful behavior is on public record and can be found on the city website forever. When I found out she was leaving, I was selfishly sad and thought, she's kind of young to be retiring. But she wasn't. She left like Tim White, like Mad folks, like a host of others. Do you even realize the hole that was left with the departure of former Director McWade? What are you doing to recover your guts and restore our city staff? Have you seen our police station? It's a ghost town. What are you doing to replenish our police department and increase public safety? Lead by example. All you have done is leave a wake of corruption and failure. Your understanding of fiscal responsibility is that of a crying eight-year-old child that wasn't hugged enough. Ooh, Ching P. Dr. Charles, when you get home, hug your kids and reassure them that they are loved and matter, lest they turn out like him. Lead by example, like our chiefs. Same bad buffoons, same bad failures. Go Bruins.
Next comment.
Maureen Milton is our next speaker, followed by Kitty Hermio, and then Diane Seville.
Good evening, council, everyone. All I can say about so far this meeting is wow. I have learned so much, and I am so glad that the city, the residents of the city can come to the council meetings, because you learn a tremendous amount. I would have learned a lot more with the budget session, but the council has not been speaking, and the staff not speaking directly into the mic, and you can't hear it all the way to the very back. So please, 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 because we are here to listen and to learn. I want to congratulate the Donate Life segment. If anyone hasn't seen it, the greatest movie on organ donation, Barry gripping is a movie called John Q. I would suggest everybody watching it, if they're thinking about putting a pink dot on their license plate. I've learned so much, and I really, really look forward to the rest of the meeting. And I will definitely want a copy of the budget so I can peruse it a little more and learn more, because the more you learn, the more intelligent you can come up with your questions. And maybe you don't have questions if you can hear everything and come and get involved, because that's the only way the city is going to keep going, is if we all get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Kitty Hermio is our next speaker, then followed by Diane Seville and Susan Valencia.
Hi, good evening. Kitty Hermio, District Four. I want to take a moment to thank Councilman Zara for helping us honor a 100-year-old World War II veteran, Joe Waddes, who was a City of Fullerton retiree, who lived most of his life in District Five. Also attending this event was Congressman Lou Correa, Senator Josh Newman, Assemblywoman Sharon Quirk Silva, and retired Orange County Judge Rick Aguirre. It was a wonderful event held at the Placencia American Legion Post 277. And I'd like to apologize to Councilwoman Charles for not speaking up sooner regarding the atrocious way the mayor and both of his minions discounted your requests regarding the two-week postponement of the legislative platform, when the three knuckleheads of this council are known for kicking the can down the road for months at a time on other agendized items. I hope for their family's sake that they do not treat their wives the way they treated you that night. And all of us, residents and city employees included, who continually have to hear you, Mr. Mayor, admonish the public for bad manners and improper decorum. That's rich coming from you when you have had the worst behavior of any mayor in the past 69 years with your own peers. What a great example you are setting. On another note, isn't it funny how all past councils have seen through the Bouchala family agenda for over 40 years? But not you, Mr. Mayor. They are carrying you and your cronies, including your candidate, Oscar Valades, who ran in District Five, in their pockets. Thank the maker for all the reasonable and informed voters in District Five that were able to see through the scam and dirty politics that you and the Bouchalas were trying to pull off to get Oscar elected. And Councilman Zara still prevailed. I have to say that that was a good day for honesty and integrity. While you choose to act like a little dictator with your position as mayor, our city employees, including police and fire, are hanging on by their fingernails just because they have a loyalty and love for our city, which you almost never acknowledge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next comment, please.
Next speaker is Diane Seville, followed by Susan Valencia and Wudarik, and then there are three more speakers registered following that.
Yes, I have lived in the District Five on West Roberta Avenue for the last 48 years, and Ms. Valencia is one of my neighbors. We are really disgusted that the city is doing nothing to clean up the homeless. They are using steno cans under their frying pans. When I called, the police department said, well, what side of the freeway is it on? And I said, I think it's the Annaphein. So I had to call Anaheim Police. I don't think it matters. Our houses are right there. You get a fire started there with those palm trees and stuff, it's going to spread in our neighborhood. But the main reason I am here tonight is I am so disgusted with this city council in all the years I've lived here. I love Fullerton. I am ashamed of the three of you. Marion, you need to go. Your days are over. You are disgusting, you are rude, and you are insulting. When you insult Mr. Zahara, you insult every citizen in District Five, because we voted for him. You owe us an apology, you owe him an apology, and you owe Dr. Charles an apology. I mean, this is just more than we can take. I'm tired of reading about you in The Observer, The Register. Everybody, you think nobody's paying attention. You guys are nuts, because we're all out in our front yards talking. Where I live, we don't have new neighbors. We have neighbors that have been there for 40 or 50 years. Lady across the street's an original owner, she's 94. We get out and we talk about this stuff, and we agree. You know, we know who's behind all the flyers and the stuff on the internet. Everybody knows. And you guys think, oh, let's let them support us? Give us a break? You know, you need to be supporting your council member, your citizens, which you're not doing. You guys are not doing anything about the homeless, except bringing more into our area by having them picked up on Harbor and Orange Harbor. Now, instead of 20, there's 50. We are just, we're thoroughly disgusted with all of you. And the fact that Mr. Dunlop and Councilman Dunlop and Councilman Whitaker, you say nothing about what's going on. What Councilman Jung is doing is an insult to everybody that lives in District Five. Mr. Whitaker, you had our neighborhood. We were part of your district until the lines were drawn. How dare you sit up there and not defend us? I mean, this is enough. We've had it. And there's going to be some big shockers when elections come, because we are going to be out putting up our own posters, putting our own stuff online. We've had it. You guys are done. You just can't get your act together at all. You're so busy insulting each other that you're not taking care of city business. And I pay you. We pay you. You know, it's my tax money that pays you. So you need to get out and work for me, and you get out and work for the rest of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Next comment.
Next speaker is Susan Valencia, followed by Wudarik, and then Anjali Tapadia. Susan is passing on her time, I think, is what you said over there. Okay, Wudarik, you are next, followed by Anjali, and then Jennifer Morales, Curtis Gamble. And that is all I have registered. So if anybody else is not on that list that would like to speak, please line up on the wall, and we'll get to you next.
Thank you very much, members of the City Council of Fullerton. Permit me, I will refrain from personal attack of the elected leaders. Mine is to address the key concerns I have. And before I embark, permit me to say this. Today, we mark the World Holocaust Day. The World Holocaust Day came as a result of one man, and because of hate, hate, hate. We Africans, we have thick accent. When I say hate, I don't say it, I mean H-A-T-E. Hate was called Adolf Hitler. He wanted to clear the Jews in the face of the world. That hate did not only end with Adolf Hitler. That hate spread. I can remember during the, when I, in my, in my arena of research, in 1936, when in the World Olympic in Germany, there was a black man called Jesse Owens. He was a black American, a black African man from here. Adolf Hitler refused to shake his hand because he was a black man. He doesn't believe anything in black person. The spirit of Adolf Hitler spread. It is here in this city of Fullerton, and more particularly, the Department of Fullerton Police. I'm very, very emphatic about Fullerton Police, and I'm happy Mr. Danny is here. I can give him all my details of the country where I come from, to reach the deputy, the director of criminal department, that's like FBI, to check if there is any criminal record I have in that place before I came to America. I went for my postgraduate studies in UK London. I don't have any criminal record. Fullerton Police decided because of racial hatred that I'm a black man. They went and arrested me in a church where I'm a member. I'm very committed. They locked me, they tell me all manner of evil things. They went and tortured me. That thing is very still, very painful in my heart. They filed charges, they took me to the DA of Orange County. I've been visiting court. Even yesterday, I went to court because I want to know the charges which is preferred against me. What crime did I do? Please, my prayer to you, Mr. Mayor, I know election is coming this year, try to revitalize and reform this Fullerton Police Department from top to the bottom. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Anjali Tapadia. After that is Jennifer Morales and Curtis Gamble. And that is it for people who are registered to speak in chambers.
Hi, my name is Anjali Tapadia. I'm a Fullerton resident. I wanted to request to pull Consent Calendar Items 9, 14, and 15. That's the street rehab, Gilbert Street Park, and Berchteste at the 91 Freeway. In addition to that, I just wanted to call the council's attention to another pedestrian fatality on our streets. On Easter Sunday, a car driver hit and killed a pedestrian on the corner of Magnolia and Flower. The car driver was racing and estimated to be going around 100 miles an hour, hit a pedestrian and killed that individual in front of their spouse. The car driver also hit and injured a bicyclist, and I believe a few other bystanders. This incident, to me, highlights the need for better traffic calming on our streets. And I've spoken on this before, but sometimes it feels like we don't really see material improvements. Traffic calming means understanding that people are going to do things on our streets that are unsafe, and planning accordingly, and physically preventing them from doing things like achieving speeds of 100 miles an hour in a car on Easter Sunday and hitting and killing an individual in front of their spouse. It should not be possible to do that. This street is wide, it's two lanes, 40 miles an hour. Convention says that cars drive 50. On one side is a series of residences with driveways that pull out directly onto the street. On the other side is a high school. There's no crosswalks for 1,000 feet in either direction of where this car driver killed the pedestrian. To me, this is a big infrastructure failure. I don't know why it is so difficult for an individual to simply stand on the side of the street, and I don't know why it's so easy for a car driver to achieve those speeds that are clearly fatal. Our infrastructure in the US has a lot to be desired in terms of pedestrian bicyclist safety, but I see cities all around Fullerton making positive changes to try to fix that problem. And I feel Fullerton has a lot of potential, but we aren't achieving it. So I would like to see better efforts toward traffic calming. We have individuals such as Mr. Harrison come up regularly and speak on the dangers of intersections like the one around Maple Elementary. But all we have is a SCAG sign that says, "Thanks for slowing down, neighbor," in front of a school with no crosswalk. So, you know, these are, these are things that we can be improving. What I'd like to call on council to do, in addition to improving traffic calming, is to see if maybe we could investigate some of these pedestrian fatalities and use these tragic, horrible incidences, incidents as a way to figure out how we could improve our streets, really investigate them, and not just say, these are accidents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Jennifer Morales. And last registered speaker is Curtis Gamble. Anybody else who'd like to speak, please line up on the wall so we can recognize you to come to the microphone.
Hello, City Council. My name is Jennifer Morales, and thank you so much for that comment. I am also speaking on Magnolia and Orange Harbor. So I've lived in Fullerton all my life, primarily on the intersection of Magnolia and Flower Avenue. So I actually heard it happen, and I actually live on that corner. And so walking out to see those people on the floor caused by a racing accident was honestly very scary. Seeing that woman on the floor dead was kind of like, she had nothing to do with it. And so this isn't the first time that this has happened on Magnolia and Orange Harbor. This is kind of crazy, honestly, because there's a high school right there, and a lot of people want to commute places. We're trying to be, you know, a lot more, you know, sustainable, as in like walking. And I actually like to walk there, but I'm always kind of scared that I'm going to be the next victim. So I understand that speed and personal choices led to this event, but I want to encourage anyone who is listening to raise awareness about road safety, injury prevention, and public health. I have lived on that intersection, like I said, nearly all of my life, and this was not the first time we have saw a deadly car accident. And I hope that this will be the last. I love my city and how walkable it is, but people should not have to die in order for us to make a difference. So a lot of people I have reached out to for options that I'm trying to give you. I don't think a speed bump is going to work, because like we all saw, the cars were actually in people's neighborhoods, in their neighbor, sorry, in their houses, pretty much. So what I'm asking you for you all to do, I don't know if this is actually possible, but I would like to, you know, propose this. But like I said, bumps or dips are not going to work, because that's just going to propel the cars into houses. But what I'm asking is for you guys, if possible, to create like a over 40, 50 speed camera, and then hopefully, all of those, let's just say, a lot of people get tickets. All of that, if possible, because I'm not really sure how it works. All of that ticket money will go back to our community to help us with further improvements. Like I said, there's a high school there. I like to commute and walk, you know? I'm trying to be a lot more sustainable. So if you guys could please help us, I would very much appreciate it. Like I said, seeing that woman on the floor and seeing my neighbors being involved in that accident is honestly so scary. What if that was your grandma? What if that was your grandpa? What if that was you? You'd never know. And so please, if you guys are able to do something- never know. And so please, if you guys are able to do something, I would very much appreciate it. I hope I won't have to come back here and ask for the same thing over and over again, because this isn't just for me. This is for my community. This is for the people that I love and cherish. This is Fullerton. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Last registered speaker is Curtis Gamble.
Mr. Gamble, good morning, or good evening, sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Curtis Gamble, activist for the homeless, the veterans, the low-income community. This evening, I would like to share with you my thoughts on the Fullerton homeless and the veterans, the OCTA bus drivers, and the low-income community funding. Number one, the cash app card is a free Visa debit card which allows community funding to pay for rent, electric bills, gas, and other goods and services. The city of Full, number two, the city of Fullerton Municipal Code for Emergency Shelters should include up to 12 movable tanning homes on church and religious properties by right on a first-come, first-served basis. Number three, the housing element for the 2021 should also include a safe RV parking program with movable tanning homes and EV charging stations 24 hours, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. Number four, the OC 2022 point timing count states that the Fullerton has over 200 homeless people living on the streets with 70 living in shelters. Five, the city of Fullerton Community Development, CDBG, and home programs provides over $2 million each year of funding and services for youth, seniors, special, special needs, and the homeless. Six, the Fullerton Navigation Center Rapid Rehousing and Low-Income CDBG funding should include Fullerton City Life Apartments and other low-income apartments. Number seven, on March 31, 2023, the county and path closed the cold-weather shelter at the Independence Park Gym in Fullerton. Number eight, the city municipal code for emergency shelters allows for OCTA bus drivers to pick up and drop off homeless at all OC navigation centers and emergency shelters. Number nine, on April 23, the American Rescue Act of 2021 Home, Home, or ARP has allocated $1,954,345 in funding to the city for homeless services. Number 10, on July 1, 2022, the city of Fullerton received $6 million in state funds to purchase a Fullerton Navigation Center. Number 11, on July 6, 2022, the city of Fullerton received over $5 million in state fundings for the Hunt Library, which could also serve as a safe parking program with ADU's movable tanning, movable tanning homes and rapid rehousing 24 hours, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. Number 12, in 2022, the city of Fullerton and the Hope Center has received over $36 million in funding on behalf of our homeless community. Number 13, the Hope Center and OCTA bus drivers shipped sublease one of the four Goodman Logistics Center warehouses leased by Sprouse Farmers Market, building number one, Sampson Electronics, building number two and three, Banda Napcom, Japanese Torah and Video Publisher, building number four. All are located in the city of Fullerton SB2 industrial by right overload zone for emergency shelters. It's time that we all start working together in order to better serve the Fullerton low-income residents, as well as the OCTA bus drivers and the homeless veterans community. You're invited to the Anaheim Convention Center Friday, Saturday, Sunday for the Home and Garden Show, and they have tanning houses there, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it looks like we have one speaker.
Good evening.
Come in. Anybody else who'd like to speak, please line up on the north wall so we can bring you to the microphone.
Good evening, Council Tanya McCrory, Fullerton resident. I'm here tonight to address the letter that Councilwoman Charles wrote to the Fullerton Observer, asking that Mayor Jung apologize to Councilman Zara for hurting both of their feelings. I'd like to remind everyone that we are not in kindergarten. We do not have to play nice. Mayor Jung does not have to like or even respect the other people on this council. All that the people of Fullerton ask is that council members come together every two weeks, put aside their pettiness, and vote issue by issue on what's best for the people. Councilwoman Charles, may I ask, where was your outrage when the Fullerton Observer published a photo of all the city council members, but strangely, Councilwoman Dunlap was conspicuously missing? Where was your outrage when the Fullerton Observer was deleting thoughtful, well-informed comments on the political coverage? These comments were deleted solely for the mere fact that they did not align with their narrow, woke agenda. Furthermore, to your letter, nobody gives a hoot. Absolutely nobody cares if our council members are male or female, black or white, Asian, Buddhist, Christian, Muslim. We do not care if you're non-binary or identify as a unicorn. Nobody on the right and nobody on the left, except perhaps a handful of your sycophants and the BS media. The rest of us, however, only care that you are decent, smart, well-informed human beings who can make decisions for our city. Your sex, race, gender have nothing to do with fixing the potholes, opening the parks, lowering our taxes, or keeping us safe. And before you write me off as some white, privileged cis woman, I am an immigrant. My parents fled a war, torn country. I grew up in financial hardship, but we were rich in ideas, values, morals, and true tolerance. Not the kind that you shout from a rooftop or write open letters in a liberal rag. My parents were and are white, conservative Catholics, yet they opened their door to homeless individuals and families, and they all lived together with us in our small home all throughout my young adult life. All five of us kids brought home friends from every race and sexual orientation. They were welcomed in our home whether my parents agreed with their lifestyle choices or not. I myself hold a master's degree. I'm an artist, a businesswoman, a free thinker. I have studied and practiced Buddhism for 30 years and still lean on my Catholic roots. No one here needs a lecture on morals or ethics from you, Councilwoman Charles, or from anyone else on this council. Stop being so divisive. It only proves that you are the one who is intolerant. One thing I will say is at least you have the decency to put your name on the letter. I admire that. Half the writers at the Fullerton Observer are too cowardly to do the same and simply sign off as staff, because they know what they write cannot stand up to questioning. We need grownups on this council. If you don't feel emotionally balanced or unbiased enough to handle this role, I kindly ask that you step down and let someone who cares more about the people of Fullerton than they do virtue signaling and pushing their own agendas.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it looks like we have one last speaker in chambers, and then we'll go to Zoom.
Good evening.
Hello, my name is Kurt Johnston. I'd also like to speak about that road down there on Magnolia. The road feels much too narrow, and there's no, there's no real visible speed sign. It'd be nice to have one of those blinking signs to help slow the traffic down. And there's also another accident there, just probably about four or five days ago, where someone crashed into a light pole. So I know that's a problem area. The elevator at the train station has been out for like about two months now, the main elevator, and nobody seems to know what the problem is, whether there's parts being ordered or whatever. But, you know, hundreds of people use it every day, so it'd be nice to...
Which side? On the north side?
Yeah, it's on the north side. And also, I really enjoyed that last speaker. If I could give a speech that good, I would. But I think when a council member runs on a woke platform from the very first day and announces that, to me, that's like picking a fight before it even happens. So I would like to also stop the division and just come here and do your jobs. So, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments in chambers, we'll move to Zoom.
I have, it looks like six hands raised in Zoom. We'll start with, if my mouse will cooperate, we will start with Harvey List. Hang on, Harvey, my mouse will get there. Okay. You should be able to unmute.
Hi, I'm Harvey List, a resident of Irvine and former planning commissioner of the city of Irvine, who has long been interested in the operations of the Orange County Power Authority, OCPA, an organization that has no accountability to the public and whose mission has not been the traditional mission of community choice energy organizations, which was to use electric tap rate payer funds to purchase 100% renewable energy sources of power, as well as provide educational opportunities, all at a price less than the investor-owned utilities. OCPA has achieved none of that. Tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM, OCPA is holding their board meeting. During their close session will be a discussion of the replacement of OCPA CEO Brian Prabalski. This item was requested by Vice Chair Kathleen Tracider, Irvine's representative to the OCPA, who has made replacement of the CEO Prabalski her highest priority in attempting to repair OCPA's major problems that have been well documented by several audits. My question to Mayor Jung, who is the chair of the OCPA board, is what is your intention as far as supporting the ouster of OCPA CEO Brian Prabalski? Regarding that vote, at a recent Fullerton council meeting, Buena Park Councilmember Castaneda, who is on the OCPA board, provided a testimonial thoroughly supportive of OCPA without any supportive evidence and thoroughly counter to what is widely known. He's apparently a diehard supporter of OCPA for an unknown reason. It is important to know that Jose Castaneda is Mayor Jung's former planning commissioner. Jose also worked for Irvine Councilmember Tammy Kim, Irvine's representative on the OCPA board. With these intertwined relationships and beliefs, it is hard to predict how a vote to oust CEO Prabalski will go. So are you, Mayor Jung and OCPA chair, going to represent the best interests of the city of Fullerton and vote out Mr. Prabalski or your own personal interests, whatever they are? On another item, when the city of Fulton, Fullerton signed up with OCPA, the city elected the mid-range of renewables, 69%, as the default for the resident ratepayers of Fullerton. Apparently, according to the staff report of the last Fullerton City Council meeting, at which OCPA was discussed, the city itself, for its own facilities, like the city hall, opted down to the basic rate, which is 38% renewables. Since depending on the secretive OCPA to actually purchase renewable contracts was highly doubtful, especially when SCE's rates renewables is substantially lower than OCPA's, the city opted down to the basic rate to use the cash for more effective ways to fight global warming. So I wonder why what's good for the city's electric bills is not also good for the resident ratepayers? Shouldn't the city encourage the residents to also opt down and then?
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Next caller is William McLennan, and you should be able to unmute.
Good evening. My name is William McLennan. I am working on my citizenship and a community merit badge. I have lived in California for my whole entire life. There has been a vacant amount of abandoned buildings in my area. Is there a plan to bring back businesses to these abandoned buildings? Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Next speaker is Kayla Asato. You should be able to unmute.
Oh, hello. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you can.
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay, cool. I always need to double-check and make sure. So like the first commenter, the first Zoom commenter, I am also talking here in this section of the meeting on OCPA. As the last speaker so eloquently said, there is that meeting at 10:00 AM tomorrow morning. However, I have heard, because I got like a phone call about it, that Buena Park Council Member Castaneda will be voting to remove the CEO Brian Prabalski. And I'm wondering similarly, if Mayor Jung, if you'll do the same. I think I've spoken quite several times and talked to you personally as well about how the current chair is antithetical, I think is a word that's coming to mind, but in opposition to the aims of the agency. And we need some major change in that regard. I think that somewhat, that people like Councilmember Castaneda and Councilmember Tracider, both of whom were very integral in the formation of the OCPA and Community Choice Energy in Orange County, I feel like they would have a pretty strong idea about how to take it in a proper direction. And considering that, I think they've both been very clear that they want to get rid of the CEO, that we should probably be doing something similar to that and trying to be doing the same. We should definitely remove him and the legal counsel, which I'm, to my understanding, y'all already did. So congratulations, kudos. But in order to get some progress on clean energy and community choice energy in Orange County, it'd be most conducive to help by moving that forward and removing Brian. And just for that clarity's sake, for those of you who aren't aware, I'm Kayla Sato from Orange County Environmental Justice. So we definitely have been paying very, very close attention to this for the past several years. So I'd very much appreciate a vote to remove Brian, and would encourage Councilmember Jung to do so. Thank you.
Next comment, please.
Next speaker is ZJ. You should be able to unmute.
Good evening, elected officials, department heads, and dedicated city staff. I, too, am a longtime Fullerton resident. To the lady who brought up the issue of pay for the council, it'd be nice if somebody on the council tonight would address that the pay, I believe, for the city council is minimal, might be $275 a month. And I also understand that their health insurance is paid for. My health insurance on the open market's about $900 per month. Okay, data. Every time somebody steps up to that podium to make a presentation from a utility company to a city department, to a business, a contractor, and all other services, the council asks these people to provide data. A lot of times, the criticism of reports is that they didn't have enough data. It's not enough there to, for the council to make a decision. I just asked for consistency. Last month, at the council meeting in March, there was a motion made to change the start of the council meeting. One motion was to start it a half hour later, and another motion to start it an hour later. When the two council members who spoke, spoke, they provided no data. You ask for data, but you don't provide any. Instead, you both talked about your human emotions to having to be home to take care of your family. It'd be much nicer if you're going to request data from everyone who stands up there to do a presentation, if you check in with your constituents and bring some data to say, "You know what? 5:30 is the best by my constituents." Or you might discover at 6:30 start time, "It really is what my constituents would like." Just be consistent. If you're going to ask for data, prevent it. Next, the North Orange County and the Eastern LA County region will and can support an auto mall. I've been in contact with one elected council member about what type of land is needed. And I've presented before that the Cerritos Auto Mall is less than nine acres. There was a question as to whether that was true or not. I invite all the council members to drive south on Euclid Avenue, and when you get past Cerritos Avenue on the east side of the street, there's a strawberry field. And it's just before you get to Catalina, it runs under the high wires. And if you look at that field all the way to the back where you see the yellow equipment, that piece of land is rented. It's four acres. You imagine that being doubled and then adding another few quarters acre. It's well within the size of the Cerritos Auto Mall. Moving on to the police department, South Gilbert Street at Orange Thorpe, vehicles are still parked on both sides of the street where no parking signs have been posted for over six years, yet I continue to witness a bottleneck and dozens of vehicles that must cross over the double-yellow line into the oncoming left turn lane. Please have someone address the cars that are parked both sides of the street where there's no parking signs. It's going to be dangerous. Magnolia is not far away where the lady was...
ZJ, that's your three minutes. Thank you.
What?
And our next speaker is Drew Price. You should be able to unmute.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and residents. This is Fullerton resident Drew Price. Councilmember Ahmad Zara, I am disgusted by your corruption trying to push cannabis onto our city. You need to come clean with your association with FBI convict Melahad Rafi. How much money did you take from our cannabis lobbyist, Ken Spiker? How much were you paid to push pot shops in our neighborhoods? You need to resign immediately. Fullerton does not need dirty criminals like yourself in office. Resign now.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
And our last caller in Zoom is Munish. You should be able to unmute.
Hello, and good evening. Public comments are often an interesting time where we get to hear from people of different backgrounds and experiences. It's nice that tonight we did have some varying opinions. It's nice that tonight we did have some varying opinions. As someone who got involved with different elements and different council members over ten years ago at this point, I, I came to understand that whether somebody falls under being a Democrat or Republican or anything else, oftentimes they got involved for the right reasons. Unfortunately, some people get involved for self-interest. Having had the opportunity to get to know many council members, including most of the ones up on the, up there tonight, I've been thoroughly impressed by, from what I see is their sincerity. That doesn't mean I always agree with their ideas and it doesn't mean that all of us will always agree with what they, what they vote for. But one of the things that really is surprising is that the true decisions really do come down to sometimes who's screaming the loudest. And oftentimes those are people with a very narrow worldview. And people who are either activists or believe in their hearts they're doing the right thing. And unfortunately, sometimes council will bend to their will or certain members will bend to their will based on what's popular at the time and the societal narrative. Recently, or I should say, I guess several years ago, when we had these district elections forced upon the city, the idea was they would be provide more representation for historically underrepresented areas in the city. In theory, that's been a great theory. But that doesn't always happen. In fact, I think a lot of us would agree that it's created a lot more division. I would say that now you've got council members that only have to listen to a very narrow narrative or a very small number of people to get their seat. That doesn't serve the general community at large very well. I would really like to see in the spirit of that very common and unfortunately misused word or term diversity, equity, inclusion, that our council take on a mandate and I would appreciate if the mayor were to do this or the mayor pro temp or whoever and say that all members on council agree that while they may have been elected by district, that they readily represent all members of the city of Fullerton. And I can tell you this has been done in other cities and maybe it's only symbolic, but I think it's important to remember that everybody up there represents all of us. Don't just listen to the loudest screamers. Do what's best for all of us. And even though you may not always make us happy, at least we should have the feeling at heart that you're doing it with everyone's best interest at heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment?
No more speakers.
Very well, we'll bring this back. And go to staff reports, Mr. City Manager, a few things. First is the medians on Orange Thorpe. Can you address those, sir?
Mr. Mayor and state council members, I will check into the median specifically on Orange Thorpe and our cleaning schedules similar to the, similar to our street sweeping. I will say that as far as, another part of it was also encampments. We have been actively trying to address encampments every other week. We go to different sections of the city and we do rotate based on where we see problems occurring. We always have to, as you're aware, based on federal law or the interpretation of federal law, we have to always make sure that we have housing available for individuals that are unhoused. And we do provide those opportunities. That's the, and then we remove the encampment at that time. So we do do that with encampments. I will check on our, our cleaning process and our street sweeping and see what's happening on to Orange Thorpe more.
Mr. Mayor, may I address that just briefly?
One, one other thing real quick. We have had just recently on Orange Thorpe in relation to some of the homeless in that bus stop area. Myself, the police chief and Hope Center have been out there and we have been communicating with the shopping center in that area also.
Understood. Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, please.
The remark was made about West Fullerton as well, and as far as I know, I'm pretty clear on it. There are no planted medians on Orange Thorpe in our city with the exception of between Harbor and Lemon. And that's not in West Fullerton, but that comparison with Brea Boulevard was disturbing for that reason.
Understood, sir. The, can you advise the public on what housing options we have available for the homeless so we're
Sure.
staying within the parameters of the state law?
Yes, so we have, we have two navigation centers, one in Buena Park and one in Placentia that we're partners with North Orange County communities. And we have those available, although I will say most of the time, one or two beds is all that's available in those facilities. And then we also, the city has also contracted with Illumination Foundation, which is on Commonwealth here in, here in Fullerton. And we contract for twenty beds per night. Recently, those have been full too, but we continue to do that. Those are the three areas. In addition to that, we also have the, we're a regional partner with the Hope Center and we do have access to the Hope Center and its staffing to help come out and work with individuals that are unhoused.
Freeway underpasses, is there a jurisdiction issue? Is that in our city?
Yeah, I can, I can go on to the freeways. So one thing we're doing, we're doing a couple of things. There are jurisdiction issues because one of the issues we use is our municipal code or our municipal codes. So if it's in Anaheim and much of the freeway, especially in the Euclid area, is actually technically in the city of Anaheim. If it's in the city of Anaheim, we cannot use our own municipal ordinances. However, we are actually in discussions, preliminary discussions with the city of Anaheim to see if we can do an agreement with them that we could then enforce their municipal ordinances in that area. The other thing is we are trying to work on agreements right now to bring back to council with Caltrans where we could do more active cleanups and they would reimburse us in the freeway areas.
The parking on Gilbert Street next to Orange Thorpe that the caller was mentioning, how are we addressing that? Is that for the chief of police I should be addressing? Sir?
Yes, sir. I had heard that at the last council meeting and that was passed on to our vendor SP Plus to increase their enforcement activities in that area.
Thank you. And then I did see the speed limit indicator on Magnolia all this week. What other things are we doing to mitigate some of the speed? It is a, I suppose you could make the argument that's an isolated issue, this road racing thing. But, and certainly by all accounts, motorcycle versus car. Is there anything else that we're doing to mitigate some of the speeding there?
Yes, sir. Our traffic unit is working together. They're speaking with the investigators who are actually charged with investigating the fatal traffic collision. And then our motorcycle officers will be out there and have been out there to increase their enforcement presence in that particular area. We do have racing issues in other areas of the city as well, unfortunately, as well as what people describe as street takeovers, which do involve some racing as well.
Understood. All right, we'll go to, is there anything further?
Oh, just one thing I do want to introduce the council to our new interim Public Works Director, Raul Godinez. He's right here in the front. He brings a wealth of experience as a former Public Works Director in several major cities throughout California. And I think he could bring some ideas both on our streets as well as maybe on traffic to the city. I'm very hopeful of that. The other thing is he does have a connection to Fullerton that you may or may not be aware of. Both of his children went to Fullerton High Schools.
All right. We will go to council reports. We'll, we'll go right to left. Councilmember Zahra, you have anything to report this evening?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to quickly on Orange Thorpe and the cleanup there and also on the, the general cleanups in the city. I know we have in the budget that we just discussed, the city in the study session that we just had before this, there were options for us to add some funding specifically for that to improve the maintenance. Now, this was all just general discussions and, and we'll, we'll see. There's another session for the budget to come back, so maybe this would be something that could be included in that to, to help fund some of these operations on a, on a, on a regular basis. I know Orange Thorpe has been, Orange Thorpe Harbor and along Orange Thorpe has always been some extra activity that renders more cleanup requirements. So, and, but I'm hoping that this additional funding will give us more proactive, a proactive approach rather than the reactive that we're, where we are today. And so, so for folks who are interested in this, that's something to look into the budget and as we, as we discuss it. And then I'd like to do a couple of things on the, on the Magnolia and Flower fatality. And it would be good if we can have maybe some data or statistics on throughout, from various maybe fatalities or road accidents that are major incidences that we can maybe come back and be presented at council so we can take a look and have an overview of where some of the problematic areas. I don't know if that's something that can be easily put together, but it would be good to have some data and so we can analyze better and maybe look at some of the, some solutions maybe. I think that is something the police chief, maybe would you be able to do that?
Yes, sir. We can certainly get, compile the data and then probably work with our partners in Public Works and Traffic Engineering to identify what would be the appropriate measures to take in response to what the data shows.
All right, wonderful. And then I'd like to see also, maybe we can do a little research and see what other cities are doing. I know that was it last year, the city of Lakewood had an ordinance on speeding. I think they increased the fines or as well to curb the racing that was going on apparently in their city. But it'd be great to see what other cities are doing as far as speed race, speeding or race, racing in the streets. And maybe bring back some ideas for us as a council, maybe some, some measures that we can explore. And I do want to just say that even though, respond to the, the issue of districts. You know, my experience, I think I'm the first person to be elected to a district and I've never really had the opportunity to, the experience of being elected at large. But the way I see it is that while I, I love Fullerton and I ran for Fullerton City Council, not for District Five City Council. And so my passion is always to look at the city overall. But districts allows me to look at certain neighborhoods that when you're only looking at a city at large, you may miss. And so it does give us a little bit ability to focus on some, some neighborhoods that may have been lost in the, in the overall discussion. So, and then you'd able to connect also with specific, not only specific neighborhoods, but also go down to really personalizing the experience of having a representative. And I think that is where I find it quite helpful. But I've gotten calls and looked at issues that are beyond District Five. I participate in a lot of activities also on the north side and we, we deal with all kinds of projects that happen all over the city. And I'm always happy to participate in that. So my love and, and participation has always been Fullerton first. And the district only helps me navigate some of the more local and localized issues. One last update on the museum. I'd like to say that we've had a wonderful exhibit, the Manzanar. And if you haven't visited it yet, please do so. It is, it has been extended. It's been extremely well received and it's been extended until April twenty-third. So this is your last chance to, to really go in and look at images from our past, from our history that are going to be really very eye-opening. And I encourage everybody to go and see it. And I really want to thank our staff at the museum and, and everybody there in the board who was able to bring this particular exhibit because it is really remarkable. That's all I have today and thank you.
Mr. Mayor Pro Temp?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I wanted to report on tonight is last Friday's event. We have a facility in the county of Orange, which has gained worldwide acclaim and awards internationally. And that's GWRS. There was an event held on Friday and it, GWRS was a joint venture between the Orange County Water District and the Orange County Sanitation District located in Fountain Valley. Also a facility of the Sand District is in Huntington Beach. But it was a celebration and really announcement of the completion of the final expansion project of GWRS. It has, over the years, been seventy million gallons per day produced of recycled wastewater. And then it moved up to a hundred million gallons per day and this final expansion achieves one hundred thirty million gallons per day. And they've labeled it the final expansion because there's no more space available at that location. And in fact, now GWRS recycles all of the available usable wastewater of the northern two-thirds of the county. And the hundred and thirty million gallons a day is a hard thing to visualize. So when you think about it, how much is that? Most of us are familiar with an Olympic-sized swimming pool, a very large swimming pool. A hundred thirty million gallons a day would fill just under two hundred Olympic-sized swimming pools every day, year round. That's enough water for a million people. The Orange County Water District serves two and a half million people in the northern and central portions of Orange County. That's nearly eighty percent of Orange County's population. So GWRS now is a new source of water, which provides forty percent of those needs for those people. And I know, Mr. Mayor, you were present there at the celebration. We had a great many attendees, elected officials from higher offices and they were all roundly cheering on this cooperative effort between two public agencies that has yielded such benefits to all who they serve. In fact, GWRS produces that ultra pure water, drinkable water, at just a little bit over half the cost of imported water. And therefore, the ability to have this matriculate into our aquifer, into our water basin is, is extremely valuable. And it also serves some of the GWRS water serves in injection wells along our coastal area to prevent saltwater intrusion. Now, we are the world's largest facility in terms of producing this wastewater into ultra pure water. Someday that may not be so, but we were the world's largest at a hundred million gallons per day and we continue to be at a hundred and thirty million gallons per day. So it's, I think it's a rare occasion when you can have public agencies set aside their differences, find a way to make something like that happen and make Orange County more self-reliant on water supplies and more sustainable in terms of multi-year droughts as well. But I just wanted to call attention to that and I think that's pretty much it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Certainly cause for celebration, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp. Councilwoman Charles, anything to report this evening?
Sure, but I don't want to step on Councilmember Dunlap's toes since we're going right to left. You're next, if you'd like, in the order. Okay, well, I'll go next then. Thank you. Okay, so it has, of course, been a busy couple of weeks and I just want to thank the community for your comments. We had so many speakers tonight and it really was quite a range of, of topics and opinions. I do want to just thank everybody who takes the time to come to council to share your opinions. And I would like to extend once again that if you would like to continue a conversation, which I'm not really allowed to do here from the dais in response to public comment, but of course I have my open office hours on Thursdays from twelve to two. You can also email me. I do respond as quickly as possible and I apologize if things get buried. Please feel free to send it again if need be. And my number is also on the website. So I would be happy to talk to anybody who wants to talk to me about anything that they want to personally talk to me about. That would be fine too. I would also like to mention again, as part of thinking about districts and I'm in the part of Fullerton where I live so close that people think we're Placentia, you're part of Fullerton where I live so close that people think we're Placentia, Yorba Linda, but we're actually Fullerton, that we do have resources over on that side of town and I want to make sure that everyone's aware of them. Cal State Fullerton had a very successful arts and crafts fair a week and a half ago that was put on by our arts department and last weekend was the very successful Veggie Palooza. Hopefully you all bought your fruits and vegetables, but please feel free to come over and visit us at the Arboretum. This Friday, there will be a movie night on campus that's open at the IM Field and I understand that some folks might feel like that is, you know, why are we even talking about that in open council? Well, I really think community events are really important. I do. And they, you meet people at these events, you mix with your neighbors, you can bring your kids to an open free movie on a big screen. They're showing Puss in Boots this Friday night on the IM Field. Parking on campus is free after 5:00 PM. I really encourage folks to kind of just, you know, not think of our side of town as, you know, just the college side of town, but to make it, you know, the community resident side of town as well. And of course, we have lots of families on that side that I hope to see out there. Another thing I would like to see is I'd like to commend our police department. We have had problems with street overtakes and with racing and we do have our large streets on that side of town as well. And we had an issue this week where I went to Target at 8:30 because I had forgotten to buy something that absolutely needed to be purchased, you know, pet food, you need it. And I noticed that there were 40 or 50 cars and, you know, dozens of people milling about looking at those cars at night and half of them looked like they were ready for racing. So it was obviously a situation where something was about to happen and I did put in a call to the police department and the fact that there wasn't an incident later, I think speaks to the prevention aspect of it. And so those kind of things don't get reported when things don't happen, but I think we should notice when it's good that things didn't happen. And so I would like to commend the police department for following up on that and making sure that we did not have a street racing takeover on Placentia Avenue that night. And also I want to remind folks that this Saturday is not only Earth Day, but in Fullerton also Arbor Day and we have that event from nine to noon in Independence Park. I'm looking forward to attending that. Or there's the Love Fullerton Day Event if you want to sign up. That's a private organization, it's not a city thing, but it's also to help clean up the city and to promote it and to promote many of our wonderful nonprofit groups here in town. And so I hope to see you out there on Saturday celebrating our city in many of those ways. And I think it's also appropriate that later tonight we're talking about our tree plan and I hope that you folks will stick around for that. I know it's hard to stay to the end of the meeting, but you know, our tree plan, our community forestry management plan is really important to our eventual sustainability as a city. And then just one final thing, just as a, kind of a thought that I had as we're going along here, and Councilman Zara mentioned, you know, the police chief working with Public Works together to put that data together. You know, we are putting together a pedestrian bridge, as was mentioned, from the OCTA help funding on Nutwood, precisely to help pedestrians avoid, you know, being part of these accidents and to create a situation where we can make it safer for pedestrians and bicyclists there. That might be something we can look at for other parts of the city as well as we move forward and if we're able to have the funding to do that. Or looking into our Safer Streets Plan, which was presented to us, things like bike lanes, which I know Commissioner Tapadia is very much in favor of, that are protected by those white barriers. And so those not only protect the bike lanes when they're installed, but they also protect, protect the pedestrians on the sidewalk as well and keep cars from encroaching on that area. That's something that maybe our Active Transportation Committee can take up and look at so that we can have some plan put in front of us, hopefully sometime later this year on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Dunlap, any report?
Yes, so Councilmember, Councilmember Charles actually, I think, no, duly endorsed the Love Fullerton event. I would just like to, to append to that, that this is really a great event and they are still in need of volunteers for a number of different activities that will be taking place across town. So please, you can get additional information at lovefullerton.org. There's a lot of information. It's a great day of volunteering, really fun for all ages and you get to help out your hometown. So it's a great event and I hope that you can all participate. And the last thing that I'll say, you know, there's been, I think, a couple of different comments, both public comments and also on the dais tonight about district representation. And I've been a pretty vocal critic of this, I think, you know, the entire time that I've been on the council, simply because somebody that was born and raised here, you know, in a town, you, I mean, I was thinking about it, I think I've lived in District Two where I was born and raised for the most part, and I've lived in District Three and I've lived in District Four. Such a small place, you don't really think about it. You know, you kind of, you know, just associate by, hey, I go over here for this, or I go here for this, or I do these things. And I think that's kind of what makes our, our city special. And I think unfortunately, a lot of the divisiveness that comes along with districts, you know, they're not just, you know, they're not just the numbers or these, you know, manufactured voting districts per se. It's, you know, all of a sudden it leads to this other, you know, kind of political arguments and divisiveness. And I think that really does a lot to work against the community as opposed to allowing a council to better serve them. So I certainly appreciate the thoughts that were shared before me, you know, both in support of and against, but I think the reality is, you know, the, the people of Fullerton and our fellow Fullertonians ultimately benefit when we're working together for the common good. And so that's, you know, I think that that's ultimately what we need to be doing for the people.
All right. We have no appointments this evening. Move on to consent calendar. I know that Councilmember Dunlap had pulled number nine, Councilmember Charles, number 10.
I think we had 14 and 15 requests, so actually if the, if the council's okay, I'll move the consent calendar, but we'll pull nine, 14, and 15. And then 10, I was going to ask if we could just continue that because, yeah, that's the discussion on street repairs.
That's nine, sir.
That's nine, excuse me. Okay. So that's, I'd like to continue simply because, and I can show this, I actually had a, had a great meeting this week and met with some neighbors who were kind enough to bring pieces of their street in, so.
You brought props?
So if anybody needs paperweights or some, you know, additional reminders of just how bad our streets can be, I've got some up here, but you know, want to make sure their street, it was actually one of them that was included in part of the street repair plan. And so I just want to make sure that, want to, want to go through and vet some of the additional concerns that they had. So if we could continue that for two weeks to the next meeting, that would be great.
All right, understood. So there's nine, 10, nine, Councilmember Dunlap wishes to continue, 10. 14 and 15 have been pulled. Can I get a motion to move the rest of that?
If I may just get a clarification and, and I love, maybe we can have those sold at a gift shop and we can pay for some. I'm sure there's plenty of those rocks out there. But I just want, just to point, clarify, I know that item nine, and I have no problem continuing it, but I know there's another item in the regular, which is item 20. Are they both related? Was it?
They are somewhat related, but they can be done in and out.
Okay. I just want to, because I know, I spoke to this, to our city manager previously and he said that these two should have been together. Is that something that maybe we can bring both of them back at the same time and as a combined?
He was being nice, so I didn't have to wait.
So the only concern I have is there is a state requirement on 20, so I'm not sure when, is that April or May when you have to have that in?
July.
For 20, for item 20?
First B1 is July 1st.
Okay.
All right. Then would it be advisable then to move both and continue both for two weeks?
I'm not opposed. I would obviously prefer to get decisions sooner rather than later, but I'm not opposed.
All right. That said, then we'll just move to continue nine. We'll, we'll try and vote on that this evening.
Can I, can I just ask a clarification question also, just so we understand what's going on?
Of course.
What, what are we looking for in these next two weeks? Just more information or?
Oh, yeah, there's, well, so there's a community meeting that has been scheduled and I, so, but, so basically they, the, the street actually has been outlined for improvements or it's been selected for improvements and there were just neighbors that had some concerns about the magnitude of what was actually going to be done. And so there were just other clarifying questions and concerns that were going to be clarified during this meeting, so.
Okay, and the meeting's happening in the next two weeks.
It is. And, and to clarify, that's also, that is not related to number 20, just, so, yeah.
All right. May I get a motion to move the rest of the ballots?
So moved.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please follow the roll.
Councilmember Charles?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunlap?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Whitaker?
Aye.
And Mayor Jung?
Aye. We'll take the consent calendar items after the agenda. We've got a regular scheduled business item with JP 23, compliance of finding an order of Fullerton City Council regarding appeal and denial of JP 23's urban kitchen entertainment terminal application. City Prosecutor, Mr. Greg Palmer. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here today to give you an update on the JP 23 case. Some of you may remember back in December of 2021, Chief Dunn and I were here for a hearing on his proposal to revoke their entertainment permit. Testimony was taken, evidence was given. The council ultimately issued the entertainment permit, but with limited hours. 11:00 PM had to be, the entertainment had to stop by 11:00 PM between Sundays and Wednesdays and by midnight between Thursdays and Saturdays. Also limited the occupancy to 299. In that decision that was published on around February 1 of 2022, you asked us to come back on October 31, 2022 to give you an update as to how JP 23 was complying or not with the limited hour entertainment permit. As I was preparing to come back on that date, I wrote a letter to JP 23's lawyer explaining to her what my update would include. Basically that there were several items that were still unresolved. The security plan had not been updated. There was a change in the patio configuration that was done without permits. There were still lighting violations that were on the outside of the exterior of the building. And over the time period between you, you issuing the limited hour entertainment permit and the September, October 2022 period while I was preparing your update, we noted, the police department noted about a dozen times in that period of time roughly between April and September where officers observed amplified music coming from the interior of JP 23. The DJ would leave the board, but the amplified music would continue sometimes for 15 minutes, sometimes up to an hour after the music should have stopped. Also, there were approximately four times when patrons were still seen with alcoholic beverages drinking and alcoholic beverages on the tables after the time period where they should have been collected. So I wrote to Ms. Harris, who was JP 23's lawyer at the time, explained to her that that's what my report was going to include. She wrote back to me and said, well, that's great, but there has, there is going to be a change of ownership in JP 23. That, those negotiations were ongoing according to her letter that she sent to me, sent to me and that she thought that it would be concluded in about November of 2022. So our thought was, well, it'd be kind of moot to come back to you on October 31st and tell you something that perhaps is going to change fairly quickly. So what happened thereafter was on the, on or about November 2nd of 2022, the, the possible future new owner of JP 23, a man named Luke Pathile, who's the principal of Machiavelli DTF LLC, applied for a new entertainment permit. And we looked at the, the purchase agreement for the business and we ultimately, Chief Dunn and, and I met with Mr. Pathile on February just to get an idea of what this guy was about. A very nice man, very respectful. I think Chief Dunn and I came, came away with the idea that he's a very nice man. It looked to us that he was a bit overwhelmed with the prospect that he had to do, because he had to do certain things in order to consummate the sale. He had to get the ABC license, obviously in his name or in his LLC name. He had to finish up the issues with the conditional use permit that were still outstanding. We obviously needed a new security plan and his plan included changing the name and some of the floor plan of the business. And so there were a lot of things that he needed to do. He promised us that he would do them. I spoke to the planning director today. He is moving through them. There's issues that come up with all those things, but he is moving through them. Right now, you probably have noticed that JP 23 is closed for the time period while they're working through those issues. But it could be in the future, perhaps in a month or two, that Mr. Pathile will qualify for all of the changes that he needs to make, at which point the police chief will have a security plan that he can look at and then tell me what he wants to do with the currently pending entertainment permit. So the future's unknown, but that's kind of where we're at right now. That's, that's what I would have said back on October 31, 2022, had there not been these changes. Obviously, there's a lot of moving parts here and perhaps I'll be invited to come back to you to explain what the result of that is in a few months. If you have any questions, I'll stick around and try to answer them. A lot of it's unknown at this point, but that's my report.
If I may, I have a, I have a question. And this may not be to you, but in the change of ownership, when you say change of ownership, how does the, the CU, does the CUP go, transfer automatically? And so that's one part of my question. And then the other part is, is the current, the current owner of JP 23, are they going to be partners or is it a complete new owner with no ties to the previous owner?
Assuming that the new owner qualifies under all the other things that he needs to do to, to start this, to, to take over the business and change the name, it's not going to change, the use is not going to change materially as far as I understand from what Mr. Pathile has said. So the CUP would run with the land and as soon as he does all the things to qualify to purchase, to, to complete the purchase agreement of the business, the CUP would go over to that, over to him through that process. Your second question in terms of the, the agreement between, I'm going to call him Jacob, I don't need to be disrespectful by using his first name, but he knows that I call him Jacob because I, I can't pronounce his last name. So I'm not being disrespectful, but I've talked to Mr. Pathile about the circumstances, the terms of the agreement, and here's how I understand it. Mr. Jacob is going to continue, he is the owner right now. The sale has not completed, so he still is in control of the location. He has, as part of the agreement, he is going to train Mr. Pathile about how to run the restaurant and the bar. Mr. Pathile has, is a family member of Jacob. He's been a patron of the, of the location for many, many years, so he kind of has an idea of how it operates. Jacob's going to continue to remain, retain control until and unless that Mr. Pathile qualifies to take over the business and at that point, he will, he will pay rent. Mr. Pathile's going to be a subtenant to the master lease. Jacob will continue on the master lease. Mr. Pathile will be a subtenant and Mr. Pathile will pay rent to Jacob, who will then pay the master lease. That's how I understand the terms of the agreement from Mr. Pathile. I haven't, I haven't talked to Jacob to confirm that, but that's what Mr. Pathile has said.
All right. Any other questions right now before we take public comments on this? All right.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, any members of the public wishing to comment in chambers?
I don't have anyone registered in chambers and I do have one hand in Zoom.
I believe an attorney would like to speak on Zoom. He did email us accordingly.
Ryan Duckett, you should be able to unmute.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for this opportunity and also to Mr. Palmer for speaking elaborately and, and honestly on his interpretations. JP 23, which is Jacob Puzikala, has relinquished, he's transferring his ABC license of ownership. He plans on not having anything to do with the location JP 23 Urban Kitchen. He has been working closely with Luke on the repairs and the floor plans to make sure that it is in compliance. As I understand it, the lighting has been taken care of. There's lighting on the west side and the north side issues. The, the west side's already been completed and the north side, the permit has been submitted by the landlord for approval by the city. The new security plan has already been submitted by Luke Pathile. The live music, as far as that being an issue in the police reports, there's confusion here because the DJ is the live music. However, there's just regular standard playlist going on. The reports that we've seen are not that they're protruding from exterior, but just that there was issues of live music, but then that's the concern. Does the music itself need to 100% seize or can just no longer be live music such as a DJ playing and then stepping down from the booth? That hasn't been clarified and I believe former council, Ms. Miller, that was, that Mr. Palmer was speaking of, asked that same question, but that, that is still something that we're looking for clarity. If it needs to stop, so be it. As far as it protruding from outside, all the reports that we saw is when the, the police task force would actually come. is when the police task force would actually come inside up to the building and actually hear it. And then as far as like the business license, it's already been surrendered. I know that's another issue. And then as far as the transfer of sale, it was supposed to take place in November. The one caveat that's holding it up is the entertainment permit. Once the entertainment permit is actually issued to Mr. Luke Pathio, then the sale becomes final and JP twenty-three Urban will have no involvement, not managing, just helping right now to help with the transfer, the flow of business, make sure that there's not issues that may have been, you know, alleged against JP twenty-three in the past. But it looks like everything is literally on point and we are just waiting for the entertainment, entertainment permit to be approved based on the few things that are pending with the city of Fullerton right now, currently. So it seems like for the entertainment permit, the ball is, you know, metaphorically in your court. And then as far as the business license, the ball's, I think, still metaphorically in our court because there has been some back and forth, but that's not neither here or before us today. So with that, I thank you and if I have any questions I can answer, I'm more than happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, we'll bring this back. I don't know if a member of staff can answer this. Does a DJ qualify as live music?
Yes.
Getting a lot of nods. I just, I just need a verbal answer.
Yes.
Okay. So DJ qualifies as live music and I'm assuming a savvy and experienced operator like Mr. Puzikala understands the ramifications of having a DJ after hours, correct? That, I mean, I'm just logically trying to connect the dots here. Would you, would it be logical to assume that somebody with his level of experience would recognize that a DJ is live music?
I think the chief would echo this comment that his idea would be that the live music, that the entertainment is the live, is the amplified music. And whether or not a DJ is standing there spinning records or it's a set playlist that's just operating automatically, the result is the same.
This is important to note because this very council in January of last year admonished the owner at that time for all of these violations that he had incurred at that facility. And then not three months later, a host of other violations continued. One, two, three, four, five, six months down the line. And now he's transferring it to a family member and he's stating, I suppose unequivocally, that he will have nothing to do with this restaurant. And I find that incredibly hard to believe considering the fact that he had all of these restrictions in place, knew all of these guidelines, yet made every effort, or in this case, no effort, to qualify with any of them. So I am not in favor of giving him a path forward that recognizes anything beyond the guidelines that were placed by our chief and our council. But I'll defer to the rest of the council for comments and motions accordingly. Counsel.
Question. My understanding is, is we don't have anything to vote on here. It's just updated at this point.
Receive and file report. And as far as the application goes, it is going through the processes of our staff in the Community Development Division.
And we don't need a motion to receive and file the report at this point.
The chair can make that motion or you can make that motion.
All right, any other questions from staff or council?
If I may.
Sure.
So as this process of the new application goes through, what is, could you walk us through the process? Does it go, it's a public hearing process, it goes to planning? What are the next steps for the new applicant?
So the steps that he has to take, as far as I understand what he has to do in order to qualify under the business purchase agreement is he has to get the ABC license in his name and I don't know that that's been done. He has to resolve the conditional use permit issues. He has to resolve the exterior lighting. He has to get a business license. And I have always thought that those things are more primary to the entertainment permit because the restaurant, the bar can operate with a conditional use permit. The entertainment permit is ancillary. So I disagree with the attorney that was on the Zoom call that the whole thing is being held up by the entertainment permit. We're waiting on the rest of the more primary permit processes and the licenses to be taken care of. And it's also our understanding that they've made substantial tenant improvements inside there. So the chief is, the chief and I are unsure whether or not the security plan that they submitted in November is still a viable security plan. If it is, he'll go with it. And that the tenant improvements that have been done, whether they are done and whether or not any of those things are going to change the security plan in terms of number of security officers, postings, things like that. So I respectfully disagree with the comment that it's the entertainment permit that's holding this up.
Right, but where is it exactly? I mean, I see Director of Community and Economic Development there maybe. I just want to know where it is right now, where that application is.
Good evening, Council. When an establishment applies for a business license as well as an entertainment permit, the FMC requires that it cannot, it should not be in any violation. So that is the process that they need to go through before they get their business license. Once they get their business license and they clear off their violations, they can then go to PD for their entertainment permit and that's when staff will start to review that. Right now, under their CUP, they were in violation for exterior lighting, so that is one. The other is the exterior facade, so they painted the building without going through a minor site plan review. They've submitted for that and staff is reviewing. And then the third, the third is lighting. Oh, T I, apologies, the tenant improvements. So anytime a restaurant or any establishment makes any changes interior to the site plan that was submitted, they need to provide a tenant improvement application. So we are waiting for the tenant improvement application. They attempted it initially, but it was incomplete, so we've asked them to make some revisions. The electrical permit is in review at this time as well as the minor site plan review.
So once all of this is done and assuming the chief will, let's say, signs off or sends them back for more revisions or security and ultimately, then after that, it goes to planning as a public hearing?
They do not need to go to planning unless a revision to the CUP is made.
I see, so this is all staff?
This is all at staff level.
At staff level?
That's correct.
They won't go to planning or to our council?
No, at one point, the property owner was interested in revising the CUP and had submitted for an application. They have now withdrawn that because they've accepted to make the changes to the lighting. My understanding is that in the past years, there's some interpretation and discrepancy between what those requirements were at the time the CUP was signed off.
Right, so we would have no say in making a decision on this as a council?
Well, I think the entertainment permit, they'll be applying for a new entertainment permit, so that is up to the discretion of PD and/or if they can always send it up to City Council as well. If it is the wish to either restrict or not allow for an entertainment permit for this year, they are annual permits, that is something that is left to be discussed.
Considering the history of this, I think it would be probably better if it does come to council or goes through a more rigorous process. But that's just my thoughts. I don't know what the legal process of all of this is. There are legalities involved. All right, thank you for clarifying all of that.
Thank you.
Anything further? All right, thank you. Next item this evening is fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four. It is, thank you. Road maintenance and rehabilitation, SB one account funds allocation. Mr. Grantham, good evening again.
Good evening. I guess you want me back next week, huh?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
We'd just like seeing you do it.
Feels like a week, your time flies. All right. Okay, so, next slide please. So SB one, we used to call it the new road tax. I think it's the toddler road tax now. It's been in place for about five years. Most people pay it at the gas pump, but you also pay it in your vehicle registration fees. So I've been receiving those funds since about two thousand and eighteen. The allocations has gradually increased every year. I think the first year we got eight hundred thousand, now we're up to three point five million. That's also obviously very helpful as we move along. Next slide, please. Just want a quick history on the previous SB one funded projects. We have focused on arterial streets over the last five years. I think it's made a significant difference. It has in our PCI scores and I have had comments of a noticeable better ride as you drive down many of the streets. So that's our background. Again, as I, I do try to be as equitable and work my way around the city as much as I can rather than focusing in different cities or different specific areas of the city. So again, I just try to, try to touch as many parts of the city as I possibly can. Next slide, please. So with any funding we receive, there are funding restrictions and requirements. This one is actually relatively simple. The main one is the reason I'm here speaking to you right now is we have to review this in a public forum. I do this twice. I've gone to INRAC and they have supported the recommendations I will be presenting, but I also need to bring it to council because there needs to be an approval of a resolution once we identify the projects to move forward with next year. Next slide, please. So here is my quote-unquote hit list of projects as of today. At least arterial streets is where I would, I would look to do. If I had all the money in the world, these are the projects I would be doing. Please note at the bottom, projects two, eight, nine, and ten are not recommended at this time because we do have programmed water main projects in the next few years. So why pave a road when we're going to dig it up to replace the water main? So those came off of my thought process right away. Next slide, please.
Quick question.
Yeah.
I know that these roads, you're tying them with the water infrastructure underneath and I know you said you have a revised concept on that that will come soon. Is there anything that can be done, other than just filling potholes, that can be done on some of the ones that are really, really bad? Just on a short term? Because I know, for example, that section on Commonwealth that runs all the way to...
Right, right, right.
That's really bad and because it's a main thoroughfare, I think...
Absolutely, so I'm going to go off on a slight tangent here, so bear with me. We have been, over the past couple of years, we've been looking at different pavement treatments. Let's call it treatments. It used to be your options were slurry seal, grind and overlay and reconstruct. Well, technology's advanced. You may recall a year or so ago, I did a project with a treatment called ARAM. That's like a chip seal and a slurry seal. We've put that down. I'm planning on coming back next council meeting with another pilot project with a similar treatment, a chip, an advanced chip seal and slurry seal. And the idea behind those is that usually you would put those on the fair condition streets. I want to push the limits a little bit and go to the streets that are a little bit beyond that and see if this product will be beneficial to the city, at least for, you know, five, six, seven years. So we've been trying different methods. We want to continue doing different methods. I think the pilot project that I'll be suggesting or recommending next council meeting was a good step and it's something that if it is successful, yes, you know, hopefully that's something we could get behind and do on these other streets, at least as a short-term measure in an economical way.
I have a question if I may also.
Counsel one.
Thank you. So actually it's one slide back, but I mean, it can go either way. So on the numbers here, and you mentioned two, eight, nine, and ten you're putting off, are the other numbers in kind of hierarchical order? Were you thinking about time or are you thinking about attacking these all at once?
No, I think I, sometimes I try to go in a clockwise or anti-clockwise or was it counterclockwise, sorry, here, sorry. There's no rhyme or reason to the numbers.
So then thinking about these in terms of timeframe, are you thinking about doing different phases or how is that going to be approached?
These projects?
Really just whichever one you could get the contract for first?
It's a couple of different things. It's where have I been in the city, when is the utility coming in? What is the condition of the street? Can I combine it with an adjacent residential project? There's a lot of variables that we take into consideration before we recommend the projects each year.
I'm just wondering if we can see something that has a proposed timeframe that takes your variables into account at some point?
So, yeah.
Or is that just on the go, on, ongoing basis?
Well, we used to, when times were better, let's put it that way, we used to have a more detailed five-year program. Things probably ten years ago got away from us and people would see the five-year program, call in year four and would say, "Yeah, sorry, things have changed." I have, prefer not to produce that. I would rather present it this way that here's my list of projects we're looking at. I just, I can't guarantee the timeframe that these are going to be in because there's a lot of variables that are changing.
Okay, I appreciate that. The reason I'm asking about all this, just for your information, is because people ask me about it. You know, you hear a lot from constituents, especially on, you're looking at project three. I hear a lot of people complaining about that part. People are very anxious for the associated road that was funded for this fiscal year to be done. I know that's not going to be done before the end of the year, but I tell them, you know, by the end of the year, which is what I heard in a previous report.
Yep.
You know, so it's, anytime you can give us these timeframes, it's helpful for us to be able to give that information back to the public.
And it's, to me, it's a kind of a catch twenty-two, so give them a timeframe. When we get delayed, everyone looks bad. So it's, yeah, don't be, give them my phone number. I'm used to those conversations, so.
I might give them the city manager's phone number. I'm not sure you want these calls coming directly to you.
No, I get a lot of phone calls, trust me, that's okay. Okay, so that was arterial.
If you want a reminder, there's a visual.
I've received those too, by the way. So in the past, we have focused on arterials, but SB one can be used on any street. So this year, I want to tweak our approach. I still want to work on the arterials, but I want to consider the local streets as well. This is what I am currently considering or recommending for local street work next year and includes, I call it slurry seal, most people understand slurry seal, but essentially be the pavement treatment project. Depending on the road condition, slurry seal, chip seal, maybe ARAM. So, and the other ones shown in purple on the screen, project eight. Next slide, please. So what are we recommending? Sticking with the arterial, this is our main project. It will be a significant run of State College Boulevard from Yobolinda to the north city limits. That will finish, essentially finish State College Boulevard for the entire city limits. This is the remaining piece of, segment of State College that is in poor condition. Everything else has been done within the last few years. The construction cost is expensive. We estimate the contractor cost to be two point four million with the overall project cost closer to two point nine. So when we got three point five million dollars, the vast majority of it is going to be put on this project. So next slide, please. So what am I reckon?
Sorry, what's the length of this section, segment?
I know you're going to ask that. I was looking on my slide hoping I put it up there and of course I didn't. So mile and a half, mile, mile and a half? Live with that? Yeah, let's go with that. Number two, so this is the tweak. I'll have about six hundred thousand dollars, hopefully some more if we get good bids and no change orders. So I want to put this money on the quote-unquote citywide slurry seal project. A lot of these, I've picked these projects to try and, again, go around the city a little bit. It's a combination of projects where we are doing work as part of this fiscal year projects. So for example, project two is going out to bid shortly. It's going to be a sewer main replacement. The streets are in good condition in that location. So once we trench it, I'll let the sun beat on it for a while and then we'll slurry over the top. Same with project three, we've already completed the sewer main replacement there. Project four is similar, we've already completed the water main replacement there. Project five is in construction right now, that has a water main project. One and seven, oh, actually, six is the same thing, what I mean. One and seven are streets adjacent to schools that are in good condition. I would like to maintain the good condition, so that's why I'm focusing on those two areas. I'm hoping that if we have additional money left over the six hundred, I'll be able to expand the limits of this project, but I won't know that until we get through the State College project.
If I may, I've got two more questions. In the previous discussion, in the study session, there was a million and a half that was... a half that we potentially would be putting in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that in addition to any of this? Or I mean, if we, if that, if that's a-
I have not, that million and a half, I have not programmed specific streets for that. I've only shown potential locations. I could add to this with that million and a half.
Okay, that, that's my question. So if it's approved, then there will be additional, uh, potential additional-
Potentially additional funding.
Streets programmed. Um, the second question in, I know you, there's a lot, a very complicated criteria that you go through. Um, do you, uh, have you considered some of the streets and, and arterials that are on the active trans- uh, transportation routes, like bike routes and so on?
Yeah, um, that's interesting. So the presentation you'll get in two weeks. Uh, part of that, um, I was going to indicate the policies that we drafted, um, with INRAC, uh, probably going on two years ago of the criteria, um, or guidelines really that we use to pick our streets. And one of the, there's a list and one of them is, uh, bike lanes. It's one of eight criteria that we look at. And there's no hierarchy in that criteria. It's just things that we should look at, um, to come up with our list.
Thank you.
Okay. Next slide, which is the last slide. So I'm hoping, um, that you agree with my recommendations and we can adopt the proposed resolution.
All right. Thank you. Um, we'll go for public comments. Any members of the public that have registered to comment on this item?
I have one speaker registered. Uh, she knows who she is. She's getting up, Jane Rans.
Any on Zoom?
One here.
Very well.
Good evening, Mayor Jung and Council. Um, as you know, I'm on the Active Transportation Committee and we've been having difficulty, um, having meetings scheduled by the staff. I know they're very busy, but, um, there are a number of issues that we feel, um, should be coming before our committee that are not, um, based on the resolution that created the committee. And obviously this is an opportunity, it's a great opportunity. Um, I'm, I'm not asking to make any changes to this plan. I'm simply asking for the council to please, um, give clear direction to staff to, um, agendize an opportunity for the Act, the Active Transportation Committee to review opportunities for improvements. This wouldn't be additional cost, um, or potentially we could be identifying minimal cost of a little extra paint, um, just to align, um, it might be potentially realign, you know, changing where that paint goes to make the roads a little safer. Um, I do appreciate, um, the work that, um, uh, that's been done, um, by the INRAC committee and by staff to, to identify these roads. I have no gripes with, with their processes. I'm excited to hear about what that process is in a couple of weeks. Um, but I would like to please ask, um, for a very clear direction of, from this council to our staff, um, to please, um, agendize these roads, once approved, assuming you're approving them, um, to come before the Active Transportation Committee in a timely manner so that we can have input on potential improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller on Zoom.
And CJ, you should be able to unmute.
Good evening, elected council, department heads and dedicated staff. I just want to remind this council of something I brought up some time ago, um, involving the city of Irvine. Um, years ago Irvine would get 50, 75, 100 bicycle riders that were all dressed in Tour de France outfits on their expensive bicycles and they would not stay in the bicycle lanes. They would try to occupy, um, the slow lane of traffic. And when, um, any car tried to drive on the road there, ta- gas tax paid for, uh, you'd get your car kicked, mirror could be broken or, um, attack on your vehicle. When bike, bikers got to a red light, they get off their cycles, sick, their bicycles and, and bang on your automobile until an attorney Irvine brought a lawsuit, uh, against the city to have the police force enforce, um, bicycle laws because the roads are paid for by gasoline tax. They're not paid for by the sales tax on a bicycle. So I'm all for painting the lanes and giving the opportunity for bicyclists to ride, but don't take away the transportation corridor that us people who, well, I have a bike, two bikes, but I also pay gasoline and that would put the road there. And that gets me to and from work. And that go to and from work creates the income where I pay my house, my taxes, my utilities, my food and my drink. So just keep that in mind as we move forward that, uh, we want safe bike lanes for bicyclists and they stay in them and out of the roadways. Go Titans, go Hornets.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner, please.
I apologize. Uh, they added my name, um, just a moment ago. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, I echo the request that this is brought before ATC. Um, this is something that absolutely is relevant, um, i- in terms of adding bicycle lanes and improving pedestrian infrastructure, requesting additional crosswalks, safe crossings. Um, when I come up here and I blab on about traffic calming and the request for more bike lanes and things like that, this, these are the opportunities that I'm referring to. These opportunities where we're already going to be restriping and redoing the roads, um, pedestrian bridges, traffic enforcement by police, these are reactive solutions. These are not proactive solutions and we need proactive solutions. We need traffic calming and safety measures built into our roads and our standards at the federal, uh, level and California level aren't always enough, which is why I ask, please bring this before ATC, um, so that we can get the experience of actual bicycle and pedestrian users, uh, pardon me, bicycle users and pedestrians, um, to give their input on these projects. So we can say, hey, a three-foot wide bike lane isn't wide enough. Hey, we need buffering, uh, between us and 50 mile an hour cars that can kill us, um, if they just deviate a little bit too much into the bike lane. Um, so I think that these measures will keep everyone happy. Um, they'll also help us achieve our climate goals, um, and they will, um, uh, they will move our traffic, uh, better and, uh, they'll make a safe, um, they'll create safe infrastructure for our bicyclists and our pedestrians, which is very important. There's people in our city who bike for fun. There's people in our city who bike for recreation and transportation. There's people who bike in our city not because they want to, but because they have to. Um, all road users deserve safety and this is what I refer to when I refer to traffic calming measures and street safety. And these are the opportunities that I refer to. So please, please, uh, give us the opportunity to, uh, provide input, um, ideally in the future before these things are budgeted out so that we have more latitude. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll bring this back to council.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just, uh, i- is there a possibility to have maybe, um, a study session on roads for active transportation or some sort of, um, session where they can provide input? Uh, and, and the, uh, second part for me is that, uh, it would be great. I'd, I'd love to see, um, at the next following council, uh, meeting, maybe you can bring a general overview to see where our roads are, uh, in general.
Oh, I can bring you lovely maps.
Yeah.
Holo maps.
I'd, I'd love to see some maps on, uh, just to see what, what we've achieved and what we're looking at, uh, in the future still.
Right. So, um, members of ATC did come to INRAC, I don't know, maybe six months ago, and there was discussion with the INRAC chair. Um, and I believe he was open to having additional discussions about how to, each committee can, can interact. I don't know where that has gone since then. Um, this might sound a little harsh. It's not intended to be this way, but obviously when we do INRAC, uh, there's, this item's been agendized. The, um, the residential street was agendized, CIP was agendized and obviously any, they're welcome to come and provide comments at that time. INRAC, we rarely get comments. So, you know, we, we really would like to have more, uh, public participation in the committee. Um, so I know that sounded harsh. It wasn't intended to be harsh. Um, but, you know, if the committee chairs would like to get together and figure out a way to interact, um, I'm more than open to that.
You know, uh, to your point on that, why, why isn't there a joint committee? Has no one thought of that where you've got both INRAC and the Active Transportation Committee meeting together? So you can kind of kill two birds with one stone.
I don't know the history of that.
There has been discussion about, should there be a way to interact?
I don't recognize the discussion part. I mean, how long are we talking about? Cause I've asked for over a year that the Active Transportation Committee be actively involved in street and road discussions and it's just fallen on deaf ears. So how much more do we need to discuss this?
I know at the next meeting, not on this project, but on other future capital projects, that that is going to be on their agenda on the Active Transportation Commission.
All right. Very well. Any other comments or questions from council? If not, then I can seek-
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have-
Yes, sir, please.
Well, I have Mr. Grantham here. Um, I know it began 10 years ago. It was 2013. I was serving as mayor at the time. And listening to Public Works and our engineers and everything, one of the primary problems with our roads, trying to keep them in good condition, was that, uh, we would reconstruct, uh, a street and then we'd go in and start, uh, digging it out for, uh, for water mains and for sewage repairs and the like. So the idea to coordinate this was, was, uh, really implemented at that time. And I realize it complicates things greatly, but now we've had a 10-year experiment on that and you're looking to maybe move in a slightly different direction. Is there a, in a nutshell, can you tell me what that would be?
Uh, so the different direction is the slurry seal. So I'm, I'm picking streets that we have no programmed utilities and they're in good condition. The other reason, I'm getting a little ahead of myself here, um, because of the MOE requirements, um, from OCTA, I think we're going to have to go away from that item a little bit, that, that scenario of following the water projects or the sewer projects in combination with the fact that we have a lot of water projects and the material availability is poor at best right now. So a lot of projects are delayed. So it takes a lot longer to get projects done. So we might need, we, I think we need to diversify, um, how we address our street projects.
Well, looking back, I'm, I'm sure we never intended it to be a straitjacket at all. And we did foresee a lot of water main replacements throughout the city. So it's, it's certainly a juggling act, but, uh, I, I would, uh, look forward to being able to get repairs more rapidly, even if it meant sometimes missing, uh, you know, a segment or two on that. Uh, the other thing was, uh, we embarked on a lot of arterial focus for a while.
Mm-hmm.
And then we found out that that was to our detriment. Uh, we were trying to serve the largest number of people with some of the problems on arterials. It was to our detriment in terms of landing grants and-
Uh, I, I would say yes and no with that. I mean, our, our projects that we're doing are maintenance. They're, they're considered routine maintenance. And as I kind of alluded to in the budget session, getting grant money for maintenance projects is, is extremely difficult. Um, you know, we've tried it with, uh, the county. We ended up getting a million dollars from the county by working different items. We've requested that, uh, um, some of our major roads to be part of their CIP projects and we get shot down every single time. We don't even get a response as to what and why. So we, we absolutely reach out to do that. Um, we're not making many headways in that, but in my opinion, um, I think it is very important to have focused on the arterials, um, in the manner that we have. I, I believe there is, there is a significant liability to the city with those streets. And, um, I think the, the program that we've put in place, I think, has worked pretty well. I just wish we had more money.
Well, I'm supportive in this plan, very much of, uh, the increased attention to some residential areas which are in, in bad need of this as well. So just wanted to provide that. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Um, council member.
Let me ask a question real quick. I, you know, it occurred to me the other day. I know in, in some cases, you know, we're now trying to, yes, uh, ensure that the work, you know, for, uh, kind of the plumbing infrastructure and also the paving coincides. But we have seen, I think, incidents where some of the work that SciFi is doing on the trenching for, you know, the different, uh, like, you know, high-speed internet and such, where that's being run. I mean, workmanship, I mean, it really across the board is, is probably C minus at best. And I'm, I'm curious, you know, kind of what we have going on internally with respect to like supervision of that and then also holding them accountable for the work. And I know that's not entirely related to pavement condition. It just gets, you know, you, you think of it one of the same just because in some cases, like we have had, I think, roads that have been recently repaved.
Absolutely.
And, you know, now look pretty bad.
Yeah. Um, I mean, Stephen might want to jump in here. Um, he deals with it on a daily basis, whereas I'm on the periphery, but, uh, we have consultant inspectors overseeing them full-time, which is, is helping, but I'll gladly.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. We just had a meeting with, um, SciFi, I think yesterday. Days are kind of long, but I think it was yesterday we had a meeting with them. And this is an issue that we brought to their attention. Uh, you know, in fact, our city engineer has just, uh, suspended their permit, which got their attention because they were not, uh, owning up to commitments and timelines that they set for themselves. So we're doing our best to try to hold them accountable. Uh, and we brought up the workmanship and in fact, uh, suggested to the CEO that some of the problems that, uh, they perceive to be ours are really on their end because they're not only hiring a contractor, they're hiring a construction manager. And the construction manager, back in the original inception of that profession, was called owner's rep. And I said, these people are supposed to be representing you and I'd like to, I'm just new here, but what I'm hearing, they're not doing a good job. And certainly, uh, you know, you're not meeting, they're not making your contractor meet the required, the deadlines that you set for yourself. And they were pretty embarrassed about that. So we'll see. They also brought up an issue about, uh, in terms of meeting their di- the deadline, they are looking at, uh, having to impact recently paved streets that are on our moratoriums. And so we're looking at that to see what, what authority there is to, to have some kind of waiver. But, uh, and when we do that, we'll bring it over to the city manager to discuss and eventually I'm sure we'll figure out how to bring it to your attention. So we're still working out through some issues. Uh, typically the moratoriums are a standard, uh, item in every city. And what we typically do as public works agencies is we have regular meetings with the utilities and we tell them, this is what we're planning to do in the next five years. If you have any CIP projects in these streets, please get them done prior or else you're going to have to pay for the repaving of a substantial portion of the street if it's under the moratorium. And so we have to deal with that issue with SciFi. I'm sure we'll, we'll, we'll report out.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. And perhaps we need to agendize another discussion on SciFi simply because, I mean, some of the things I'm hearing about that, like their work trucks are getting towed because they don't have current tags. I mean, that's pretty embarrassing that a, you know, and, and, you know, that this subcontractor, right, for this company is, is doing this sort of thing. And I guess it was my experience that SciFi themselves, you know, are the kind of idea entrepreneurialistic type. And unfortunately, like, we have to hold them accountable for ultimately the services that are being provided by their contractors. So anyways, thank you for that.
All right. Anything further? Then I'll seek a motion for, to approve the resolution.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I do have one thing further.
Counselor member.
Just to go back to the discussion of the different committees that are involved here, uh, I know that the transportation committee also writ la- the larger transportation committee has ideas about bike lanes and, and changes of things, especially on associated. Um, where are they in this process of trying to put things in front of committees? I mean, there's three intersecting committees here, commissions we have that we have to deal with. And I, that, this is a, maybe a bit of a flow chart that we, we could have created, but I, I think we need to have a, a good idea of where in the timeline of getting streets, you know, paved and then, you know, creating the environment on top of the streets that have been paved, basically the transportation environment, who looks at it when?
Yeah. So I, I think obviously there needs to be a, a more roundtable internal discussion of how to deal with this. But I will say that, you know, obviously Stephen is, is very active in the ATC and TCC. And I spend a lot of time with Stephen and our traffic division who are at ATC and TCC. So I, I'm not doing these projects or designing these projects in a vacuum. Um, they're very aware of it. Um, for example, you know, associated road, um, you know, we're, we're doing the slightly different design or an updated design for the bike lanes, um, in, in that stretch of road. So although it may not come to the committee directly, um, I, I feel that there's, there is internal communication that kind of touches on each of the committees. Um, but I think obviously we, we need to have another discussion of the best way to actually present everything to the committee.
All right. If there's nothing further, I'd seek a motion to approve this resolution.
I would, uh, move the recommended action.
Thank you.
To adopt this resolution.
No second.
All right. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Charles.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Portem Whitaker.
Aye.
Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Next item is the Community Forest Management Plan Update. What I'm asking before, uh, Mr. Bice even makes a presentation is I'd like, uh, to continue this item until the second meeting in May. Uh, so more community stakeholder, uh, can, uh, voice their opinions on this and we take their suggestions accordingly.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, if I may, the, as I will not be present at this, at that meeting due to travel. Mr. Mayor, if I may, the, I will not be present at this, at that meeting due to travel and would not have the opportunity to even zoom in because of the location I'll be at. And so I would, I would like, I'd like to provide input on this.
Mr. City Manager, is there a timeline to this, that we need to have this done by for some sort of state or federal or...
So the grants' deadline's March of '24.
Twenty-four.
But that's for the 500 trees, right? Both. Oh, for both.
Okay, '24. So how about June?
June would be...
All right, very well.
I'd appreciate that, yes, thank you.
So I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Just a point to clarify, is this, in order to give more time for community input or for people to give... Is there a mechanism for that? Are we hosting community meetings, or what would we be doing for that?
That's my plan, indeed.
Okay.
To work with staff and get a meeting set.
Sounds good.
Or two. All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunlap?
Aye.
And this, did you hear the motion? It was to continue the first meeting in June, Councilmember?
The tree plan.
So Councilmember Charles?
Yeah, I heard a very quick discussion and realized I stepped out in the lap wrong 30 seconds. Call the roll for everyone else and then come back to me. Let me think about it for a second.
No problem. Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Whitaker?
Aye.
Mayor Jung?
Aye.
Did you forget Councilmember Dunlap, or did he...
No, she got, she...
Oh, she did? All right.
She was first.
She was catching her breath.
Thank you.
Aye. We'll make it unanimous.
Passes unanimously.
All right, very well. We'll go back to the consent calendar. Again, Councilmember Dunlap asked number nine to be continued. I'll seek a motion for that.
Shall I move?
All right, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Charles?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunlap?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Whitaker?
Aye.
And Mayor Jung?
Aye.
And consent calendar, item number 10, was pulled by Councilmember Charles. Councilmember, you want to make comments or ask questions accordingly?
Thank you. Yeah, I pulled this item because I found it to be of something that, as a new council member, was not something I was necessarily fully prepared to see. You know, it's kind of a shocking thing to see a military use policy. And I appreciate the Fullerton Police Department being here to explain it. I thought it just deserved more full explanation. And as I was going through the document, I did notice that there is a lack of military equipment in things like tanks, Ferguson-style body armor, those kind of things that we usually think of when we think of military equipment for police. And I thought it would be good to give you folks a chance to explain what it is that Fuller, Fullerton Police does and does not have.
Yes, ma'am. This was presented last year, and this is just a renewal of what was passed last year. The Police Department does not have any military equipment, which traditionally military equipment as surplus military equipment through the 1033 program. We don't have any tanks. We don't have any rocket launchers or anything like that. The state passed AB 481 in 2001, which changed the state's definition of military equipment to include many items that are available for law enforcement only and a lot of items that are available to the public. For instance, if you've ever seen, people commonly call them drones, that you can buy it, that would be military equipment now under the new state law. A vehicle, a van that you could set an office up in is now military equipment. Items that are only used by law enforcement for training, like we use SIM rounds, which are very similar to paintball, but they just shoot out of a different device, those are now considered military equipment. A lot of our less lethal munitions, the sponge gun rounds and other items are now considered military equipment. If you had a remote control car, if we did, that would be considered military equipment by the change in the law. So we didn't add any new equipment that you would traditionally think of military, nor do we have any. This is just so that we can continue to have the equipment we already have and anything new. So this year, the only new items that were on there are replacement vehicles and new vehicles, ones for the crisis negotiation team that have basically a mobile office inside of a Sprinter van-type van. A replacement for SWAT's command post is, it's a truck, but it's a replacement vehicle for what was a van. And another vehicle, which will be more like a potential mobile command post that's partially paid for by grant money through the CHP, so we can use that when we set up checkpoints or have a major event. So another equipment that we're adding, you would think of as military. All the equipment that we have is either designed specifically for law enforcement, not the military, or it's actually designed for consumer use, but when we use it, the state's decided that's military.
Okay, thank you. And I do think that's an important distinction to have on the record, so I appreciate that you came and discussed that. And I also appreciate that things like the Fullerton Drone Program, you know, the police drone program have been incredibly successful at de-escalating conflicts, especially when we have protests and those kind of things. I do appreciate that the Fullerton PD is acting as a community partner in that way and making sure that it's not a confrontational issue. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And while we have an opportunity on the public record, I'd like to follow up that question with one other, which is, "We don't own any of these materials, but do we borrow or lease or have other agencies provide them in certain instances?"
Military, well, traditional military equipment, like, we will not have a tank on our streets. We do not borrow a tank or a jet fighter or an armed drone or anything like that. We are able to borrow equipment from another agency. In fact, there's one item on there, which is an armored Suburban. It's just for our safety. If we have a team who's going out, ATF owns that, so it is a borrowed piece of equipment, which we may use, completely not military. It just, it has armor in the door, so when we open them, if something hits the door, we're safe.
Yeah, I'm asking that because that is a clear distinction as to whether they are utilized here on occasion. I don't know if you're familiar with, a few years ago, there was a lot being communicated about dirt box and stingray?
I am not, I'm sorry.
Okay. There were a number of municipalities that said they did not have that capability, but they were able to obtain it for whenever they wanted to utilize it, so...
Any items that we're going to borrow, we have to list on this policy. So any items that we plan on borrowing are already listed on there, and the only item we plan on borrowing is that Suburban.
Good. That's all I was looking for, was that clarity on the record, so I appreciate that. Thanks.
And just last question. This is a public document, correct? All this?
It is a public document. The military policy is updated for this month, and it will be reposted on our website. The summary of use, which was attached, will be posted online on our website, and we'll have a separate department public discussion. If anyone has questions about that, available early next month. We haven't had any complaints on our policy, and we haven't had any violations of our policy. So that annual report will be available as well.
Excellent, thank you.
And again, this is an annual report that the state requires.
Yes, sir.
Yet another thing that we have to contort to from the state. We'll seek public comments on this matter. Are there any registered speakers?
Good evening, once again, Mayor Jung and Council. My name is Jane Rans. I recall when this was discussed last year, and I was at home, and I was expecting a discussion on the items. And at that time, there was a list of items. I'm not finding in this agenda item a list of items. Apparently, they are pre-approved from last year. And one of those items was interpreted as being a sound system, which is actually a piece of military equipment that is capable of harming humans through sound. And I would like to hold off on this item until we can bring forward the list of items that are in use, that were previously determined to be innocuous, that maybe that interpretation might not have been appropriate. Thank you.
Any callers on Zoom?
CJ, you should be able to unmute.
I too would support seeing a list of these items so that we could determine their capabilities. I am in favor of the Fullerton Police Department to have all the necessary items to protect our community. And I give kudos to the Fullerton Police Department this past week. As I was commuting back from my place of worship, I drove down the street. There were seven Fullerton Police Department vehicles stopped to address a female who had not taken her medication and was wielding a large knife. The Fullerton Police Department did not kill the lady. They took her into custody with straps and everything they could use and took her to what they shared with the community, as I parked my car and got out to get some help through a mental health facility. I was able to speak with Corporals Chandler and Corporal Police Chief, is it Ibera or Cabrera or Ibera? Kudos to them and the other seven Fullerton Police Department officers who provided service that was exemplary to our community and to this individual who was in need of some mental health services. So my hat is off to the Fullerton Police Department for what I witnessed Sunday after I finished my worship service and was blocked from getting down the road I was commuting on, but it was well worth the wait.
All right, thank you for that.
Go Titans, go Hornets.
Okay. Councilwoman, since you pulled this item, if you want to seek a motion to approve it, we'll move forward with that.
I do, but I just wanted to also clarify that there is a list. It's attachment number three on the agenda. So I did look at the list, and I will make a motion to approve this item.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Charles?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunlap?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Whitaker?
Aye.
And Mayor Jung?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
And item 14 was requested by the public to be pulled. I'd, before we discuss, I suppose I could ask a member of the public to say your comments or questions accordingly.
That was Anjali Tapadia.
This is for 14.
Thank you. You already know my name, Anjali Tapadia. I'm a Fullerton resident. This is regarding Gilbert Street Park. I wanted to reference specifically the light item regarding, pardon me, line item regarding the bike racks. The selection of bike racks and their positioning are definitely within the ATC's purview, in case this doesn't come before ATC. I just wanted to request good-quality bike racks. This sounds so simplistic and sounds not that important, but actually, it really is. We have a lot of bike racks around the city that are just unusable, or they're not the appropriate type. A lot of them are triangular in shape, which is very hard to use, and a lot of them are positioned against barriers, which makes it impossible to actually park your bike appropriately. The most valuable parts of the bike are the rear wheel and the frame, and so when you try to use one of those triangle racks, especially when it's pushed up against some kind of barrier, a tree, a wall, whatever, it becomes unusable, and you can basically only get, like, one, maybe two bicycles on a large rack. The sinusoidal bike racks, which are the ones that look like this, like a wave, they're the kind that we have in front of the community center, also out here in front of City Hall. Those are also not good bike racks either, for similar reasons. And so I wanted to request, since this item includes bike racks, that we get good-quality bike racks. You can ask the ATC for suggestions from actual bicycle users, but the good bike racks are the inverted U's. They're the ones that are like this, and they're individual. They're not connected to each other. And you can position them in a way that where they take up minimal space, but they still allow the maximum number of bicycles to be parked there safely. I also wanted to ask that the positioning of the bike racks be considered. It's always best to put bike racks in very conspicuous places in high-traffic parts of the property, because that visibility and that foot traffic dissuades bicycle theft. Bicycle theft goes up when the bike racks are placed in a non-conspicuous location, because that place is more obscured, so a bike thief has more time to, like, saw at the lock to get a bike away. So, for example, the Fullerton Public Library has bike racks that are, like, way out in the front, which are away from the front doors, and that is a non-ideal location. However, a bike rack that's located close to high-traffic areas and a properly positioned and a correctly selected bike rack, those are the elements that can really dissuade theft and then promote people to actually bike, if they have a place to park. If you don't have good parking, people don't bike, because they don't have a safe place to put their bike, and then they have no way to get home if it gets stolen. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments in chambers for this item? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you again. Good evening, everyone. I'm Maureen Milton again, thank you. I was just wondering, with the things that are going to be done to the park, with the ADA work and everything like that, is there any type of grant that I don't know how the ADA works? Does the ADA offer grants to help with all the ADA adjustments that will be doing, will be done with the things that are on the CIP list? And so that's what I was wondering. Do they help at all? And every, as I say, if we could get some grants, that would ease our budget a little bit. So if that's a possibility, could we take advantage? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any comments in Zoom? Then we'll bring this back to council. I'll seek a motion to move this.
I'll move the item.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Charles?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunlap?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Whitaker?
Aye.
And Mayor Jung?
Aye. And number 15 was also pulled by the member of the public. We'll ask that member of the public to come down
and see common or questions accordingly.
Apologize for monopolizing today, but thank you for the opportunity and for your patience. This topic is on Brookhurst at the 91, and street rehabilitation projects, again, simply pointing out the need for, again, bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure right here. If you've never walked or biked down one of these roads that crosses the freeway, you know, Euclid, this location at Brookhurst, I often try to go to Santa Ana River Trail and crossing, taking La Palma to cross, I think it's the 91, to get to the Santa Ana River Trail by bike. It's a really miserable stretch of road, and I wanted to request better pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure in this area. These are really important thoroughfares, because they're some of the few locations where you can cross from one part of town to the other, going under or over the freeway. However, there are also really terrifying parts of the road when you're on a bike or on foot. They don't, there's cars passing in many different directions at high speeds, and so it effectively blocks you off from parts of the city. There's times when I can't, I literally can't get across town because I know that I'm going to be having to traverse a road that goes through a freeway. Dr. Charles has often spoken about the way that the 57 separates her part of town from the rest of Fullerton, and that's a really valid point of view, because freeways really do cut off parts of the community. They block them off, and especially because there's so few thoroughfares to get across them. So, you know, even though, you know, you might say, "Oh, there's not enough space for a bike lane. Oh, you know, we, you know, there's really not a consideration for better active transportation infrastructure." I actually would make the argument that this is a particularly important stretch of road and an example of a type of road stretch where it's important to prioritize those items. As people, if you ever drive or go past these particular types of intersections, you'll see a lot of individuals trying to get across, and it's very challenging. So as part of this improvement project that involves on- and off-ramps along Brookhurst, I wanted to request better bike lanes. Well, any bike lanes would be nice, but I wanted to request better bike lanes. I also wanted to request better crosswalk placement to improve visibility. I also wanted to request better sidewalks, especially for the mobility impaired, because this presents a major issue for those individuals as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll seek public comments on this matter. Are there anyone, is there anyone in chambers that wishes to make public comment? Ms. Rockford, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I hope you can hear me through this.
I hope you can hear me through this. I wanted, I have attended many INRAC meetings, some by Zoom, some in person. I have attended TNCC meetings. I try to attend ATC meetings, but it's very difficult. Last year and the previous year, I would say the majority of them were canceled, and people did not have an opportunity to talk about any issues, because they were canceled. In fact, this month's meeting was also canceled. And I'd love to know if it's a staff resource issue, or if it's because there's nothing to be discussed. I can't imagine that it's because there's nothing to be discussed. All these things, it'd be great if we can combine ATC with INRAC or with TNCC, but if the ATC would just actually have their meetings, I think a lot would get accomplished, and then you would be able to see those recommendations incorporating a very important part of our traveling public into the decisions of the other committees. They could flow up possibly, rather than having the items come to ATC after all the decisions have been made, without the benefit of that unique and important perspective. I'd also like to mention that complete streets, I don't always agree with all the state mandates, but complete streets is the law of the state, and that means that when you're, I'm going to say this in late-person's terms, so please forgive me, you can do a much better job, but that would be something that I think the council and all the different transportation commissions in our city should hear. What are the complete streets policies? How can we use them? And what it means is that we're supposed to be making sure that people who walk, ride bikes, use transit, and drive can all be served when road improvements happen. It just makes sense. And also, in our city general plan, we have a little policy called the fair share policy that asks that new developments that are building, that are helping us out with roads also can contribute to some of the transit or pedestrian or bike issues when there's a nexus, which there almost always is when those sections are right in front of their new development. I have to commend Heather Allen, who is starting to really incorporate those types of things. Whenever she had a project coming up, she would ask for those extra things that we all need in our streets and roads. I'm bringing this up here, too, because I also want to mention that Caltrans has some sections in their manual that discuss safety at on-ramps and off-ramps. Huge. It's very dangerous conflict area for bicyclists and pedestrians. Thank you very much.
Any other comments in chambers? Seeing none, we'll go to Zoom.
We have two hands raised in Zoom. CJ, should be able to unmute.
Good evening, elected council. I think we need an accounting of the funds for roads. When I buy a spirit to drink and enjoy, I'm required to pay a sales tax on that spirit. When I wish to smoke my pipe or an excellent cigar or any other kind of tobacco, I must also pay a high tax for that luxury of that tobacco product that I wish to enjoy. It is unreasonable to offer, is it unreasonable for me to offer that if you wish to create a bike path, that you shouldn't pay for that in some sort of a bike tax, rather than use gasoline tax to provide that? I choose to ride my bicycles on a well-established bike path that are built and safe for all traffic, as they are established bike paths away from any kind of traffic, that cars cannot be on the bike paths I choose to ride on. I do notice, when you want something, it has to be paid for. If you go down Page Avenue, going westbound towards Buena Park from Brookhurst, you'll notice there are no sidewalks on both sides of the street. Why? Nobody's paid for those sidewalks, so they're not put in with some kind of road gasoline tax to have curbs and sidewalks. That part of the city belongs to the county, and they don't choose to have sidewalks. So unless bicyclists want to pay for their lanes, I got to pay for tobacco, I got to pay a tax for what I want to enjoy. If you want to enjoy your bicycle, start a fund and pay for the paint, and rather than use, and I'm all for bicycle lanes, but I choose to ride where they're already well-established and paid for. So I'd like an accounting of any funds that are used for the painting and establishing of bike paths, that if the funds are actually been taxed for bikes, fine, but if it's a gasoline tax for roads, it needs to be spent on roads, just as my tobacco tax is spent on tobacco and my spirit tax is spent on my spirits. Go Titans, go Hornets.
Thank you. Next comment.
And our last speaker is Matthew Leslie. You should be able to unmute.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Jung and members of council. I was surprised to find out that this, I shouldn't be surprised to find out that this item was not brought before the Alternative Transportation Committee, as I've heard that quite a number of other ones are not. And I might suggest that your meetings might not last so long if, in fact, the ATC were allowed to do their jobs and have these items presented to them, so that they might make a recommendation to you that might be included in your agendas, instead of having to listen to the individuals from the committee come up and speak about the items, because their input was not solicited as it is supposed to have been. Earlier, I heard a member of the staff, and forgive me if I misinterpreted what he was saying, but it seemed to me that he was suggesting that those members should be showing up at other committee meetings and speaking their minds on these issues. No, perhaps they can do that, of course, but these items, as you suggested, Mayor Jung, and thank you for your support on this issue, these items should have been presented to the ATC in a timely manner, so that they would have their input counted toward a recommendation that this council may make on these items. And it's extraordinary how many times their meetings have been canceled, because they're told that there are no items, or there's no staff, or something else that is preventing somehow these items from being presented to this committee. Cycling is an important part of the city. Providing infrastructure to cyclists is beneficial economically with regards to the previous caller. Consider that every time you put somebody on a bicycle for an errand, that they might have driven their car to complete instead, then now you have a car that's not tearing up the road, and that ultimately will save money. So I think if you take a number of cars off the road, and they don't tear up the road as much, that's worth a line of white paint and a couple of symbols written there, because bicycle tires don't tend to tear up asphalt like car tires do. So it's worth the investment to complete safe bicycle infrastructure in any way you want to look at it. Health-wise for the rider, health-wise for not generating the air pollution. I would just respectfully request that somebody make sure that these items are going to the Alternative Transportation Committee as they should. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we'll bring this back. You know, I would encourage staff just to think about something that's plainly obvious to me, and hopefully, it's obvious to everyone on staff as well. The state is determined to get persons out of their cars, and for good reason, if you believe in climate change. So much of the funding that's attached is attached to multimodal transportation or enhancing bike lanes, and certainly that way with the Orange County Transportation Authority. So perhaps if we just kind of change our thought process and adjust to including the folks that are on this committee and encouraging them to incorporate inside of the discussion, maybe these low-hanging fruit grants we get. Mr. City Manager, you had something you wanted to say?
Mr. Mayor and City Council, I understand, and we are trying to adjust on that. I will, though, say on this item, this is a bid item. So this is an item that started before I was here as city manager, actually. And the design, when they should be involved, would have been like last spring, maybe last summer, because at this point, this item is at a bid point, so your only decision is whether you award the bid or.
I think we understand that. I'm saying, you know, as we're moving forward, if you think about this as best policy, we may be, you know, getting allotted these grants, this money that's out there, this funding that's out there, not only from the state, the county, but, you know, this version of the federal government, it is devoted towards getting people out of their cars. So, you know, I think it'd be helpful. With that said, I'll move this item. Is there a second? Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Charles.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitaker.
Aye.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
That concludes our meeting this evening. Next meeting is Tuesday, May 2nd. Same bad time, same bad channel. Good night, folks.